I'd like to call the September 11th, 2023 Board Meeting to order. Do I have a motion to move into closed session?
Mr. Chair, I move that we go into closed session to discuss confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11a1 and a6, and 115c-319 through 321 to discuss confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11a1 and 115c-402, and to consult with our attorney for the Board of Education in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11a3.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? We're in closed session.
I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Is that a second?
Second.
All right.
Who was the motion?
It was on. He made the motion. Mr. West. Seconded it. Okay. I think we're all set for a, if everybody would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Burden, you can remain seated if you'd like. They're posting the comments. If you would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would remain standing for a moment. For a moment of silence. I'd like to commemorate this as being Patriot Day and to remember those who lost their lives on 9/11. Thank you. You may be seated. All right, item 3C, I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We need one addition to the agenda, to the consent agenda, as item 6F is in Frankfurter, which will be approval of contingent via agreement with, bear with me, Baird, Mandela's, Brockstedt, and Federico LLC, Ward Black Law, and Leaf Cabrazer, Hyman and Bernstein LLP.
Okay, so I need a motion to amend the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Ms. Burden, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz?
Who's the second one then, sir?
Chris.
Mr. West. Okay, now, I need to have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. All right. With that, we are going to do our board spotlight right now. Would the Eastern Wayne High and Southern Wayne High Air Force Junior ROTC commanders, as well as any cadets, please come forward? We would also like to invite their families and principals to join them. Please come forward. Don't be bashful. Well, this is a board spotlight. Distinguished Unit Awards. With September 11th being recognized as Patriot Day, it is with special honor that we recognize two high schools this evening for having earned Distinguished Unit Awards from the United States Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, or J Junior ROTC, Headquarters for their outstanding programs over the course of the 2022-2023 school year. The Eastern Wayne High School Air Force Junior ROTC Unit NC-804 and the Southern Wayne High School Air Force Junior ROTC Unit NC-023 were among 30 units across the state and among 367 units nationwide to receive the Distinguished Unit Award for the 2022-2023 school year. There are currently 890 Air Force Junior ROTC units in the United States, US territories, and in DOD schools outside of the US. The Distinguished Unit Award recognizes units that have performed well above and beyond normal expectations and that have distinguished themselves through outstanding service to their school and their community while meeting the Air Force Junior ROTC Citizenship Development Mission for America. In addition to meeting all fitness, training, program, and testing requirements, cadets completed hundreds of hours of community service. It is worth noting that this is the sixth year in a row that Eastern Wayne High School's Air Force Junior ROTC Unit and the fourth year in a row, the Southern Wayne High School Air Force Junior ROTC Units have been recognized with the highest possible unit award by Air Force Junior ROTC Headquarters. For the past two years, both units have been recognized with a Distinguished Unit Award. The Eastern Wayne High School's Air Force Junior ROTC earned a Distinguished Unit Award with Merit Award for the 2017-18 school year, which was its last inspection year. Both units were awarded the Air Force Junior ROTC Resiliency COVID-19 Award ribbon for the 2021 school year, which was the only honor presented to Junior ROTC units that year. On behalf of the board, we would like to congratulate both units for this outstanding achievement. We would also like to congratulate all of the cadets who helped earn this recognition for their units as the awards were a direct result of their leadership and community service demonstrated throughout their respective Air Force Junior ROTC programs. I'd also like to point out that there are probably several members that have graduated and moved on that aren't present here today, but they're just as important to this award as those that are standing in front of us now, so. Thank you very much. Dr. Witcher? Yes, please. So these certificate of recognitions. Wayne County Public Schools and Wayne County Board of Education recognizes both the Southern Wayne and the Eastern Wayne Air Force Junior ROTC Units for achieving the Distinguished Unit Award from the United States Air Force Junior ROTC Training Headquarters for the 2022-2023 school year. Signed by myself as the chair and the superintendent, Dr. Mark Witcher. Well done. And as a former Air Force officer, I'd like to say it just warms my heart. Thank you. Please, around for handshake.
Okay, congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Well done, thank you all.
Congratulations.
Make sure.
Congratulations, job well done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
All right. Let's do the PLS update. All right, item 3D. Our PLS update. Who's got our PLS update? Dr. Mason, do you have our PLS update?
No.
Be Dr. Artis.
I'm bringing that.
Standby for technical difficulties.
So I'm going to go through each one of these updated policies from starting with 1610-7800, which is policy title Professional and Staff Development, and briefly just describe what each one of those entails. One, 1610-7800 Professional and Staff Development adds a reference to a new statute with a professional development requirement, updates the legal reference as well as the update for the footnote. Under Policy 3101 Dual Enrollment, it adds information in Section A to reference the Career and College Promise Partnership Agreement, which is now required by State Board of Education policy, and it describes the specifics of the policy, updates the legal reference, as well as updating the footnote. Under 4023-7233, which is a policy specifically for pregnant and parenting students and employees, changes the policy number and title to reflect the new expanded scope of the policy, adds a new Section B to address the rights of pregnant employees provided by the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act and the Pump for Nursing Mothers Act, updates the legal and cross-references, and adds footnotes. Under 4310 Integrity and Civility, specifics that copying the work produced by artificial intelligence is considered plagiarism and includes other minor editorial changes. Under Policy 5008 Automated Phone and Text Messaging substantially revises the policy to align with current case law and declaratory rulings concerning the Telephone Consumer Protection Act of 1991. Notable changes include rewriting Section A to make the policy applicable to text or artificial or pre-recorded voice messages sent to a set of pre-programmed phone numbers using an automated notification system. It also adds, let's see, my page jumped here. A rewriting of Section A to make the policy applicable to text, adding a provision in Section B requiring that calls using an artificial or pre-recorded voice must state the name and phone number of the school system, and B2 clarifying that an automated notification system may be used to satisfy parental notification requirements, but that the notices will be delivered by other means to parents who have not given consent to receive non-emergency calls, who have, or who have revoked prior consent. Adds a provision in Section E that encourages parents and guardians to provide accurate contact information, includes minor editorial changes, updates the legal and cross-references, and the footnotes. Under 5040 News Media Relations moves information from the third to first paragraph and adjusts the language for consistency with Policy 2220, official school spokesperson. the language for consistency with Policy 2220, official school spokesperson, includes other minor editorial changes and updates the cross-references. Under Policy 6315 Drivers, it changes language in the first paragraph and in Section B to expand the scope of the policies to cover all drivers operating any vehicle in the course of carrying out their employment duties, adds a reference to Policy 6305 Safety and Student Transportation Services in the body of the policy and in the cross-references. Adds equivalent that school bus and activity bus drivers report all accidents that occur while driving a school vehicle, and two, comply with the requirements of Policy 7241 Drug and Alcohol Testing of Commercial Motor Vehicle Operators, includes other minor editorial changes. In 6330 Insurance for Student Transportation Services, it amends the language in the first paragraph to change liability insurance to liability coverage, deletes the second paragraph, which was based on state law that has since been revised, and includes minor editorial changes, adds a hyperlink in the legal references. 6402 Participation by Historically Underutilized Businesses reorganizes and rewords language throughout the policy for clarity, encourages the use of small businesses in accordance with state policy, adds reference to the NC Electronic Vendor Portal in Section A and updates the reporting requirements in Section B, as well as updates the legal and cross-references and the footnotes. Under 6430 Purchasing Requirements for Equipment, Material, and Supplies modifies language in the introduction to ensure consistency with Board Policy 6420 Contracts with the Board, includes minor editorial changes and removes a footnote. Under 7503 Teleworking modifies Section E to reference accommodations required under the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, updates the legal references. And 7810 Evaluation of Licensed Employees modifies language in Number 9 for clarity. 7815 Evaluation of Non-L licensed Employees modifies the language in the opening paragraph in Number 5 for clarity. And finally, the last section of policies lists only minor or editorial changes, legal references, or cross-references, and that is to include 4130 Discretionary Admission, 4155 Assignment to Classes, as well as 4334-5035, 7345 Use of Unmanned Aircraft Drones, 5028-6130-7267 Automated External Diffibrillator, 6410 Organization of the Purchasing Function, 7340 Employee Dress and Appearance, as well as 7650 Employee Travel and Other Related Other Expense Reimbursement. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
The fact that you read that that fast is very impressive. Any questions from the board? None? All right, I think it's time for our public comments section.
All right, we've got five individuals that would like to speak tonight. Read the guidelines for public comments. Wayne County Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of education programs and school facilities. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest from the public. However, obscene, vulgar, and profane statements and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. An organization or delegation representing the same topic is encouraged to select one individual to make a presentation on its behalf. Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentations will generally not be acted upon at the time it is received but will be considered for potential action in the normal course of business. Individuals with concerns or complaints are strongly encouraged to initially seek a response from the school district official responsible for the program or facility, or from the superintendent.
How many?
Five.
Five? We have five tonight.
Yes.
First one?
First one, Francine Smith from Goldsboro Wayne NAACP. A statement regarding comments made by the Spring Creek Principal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Goldsboro Wayne NAACP is issuing this statement to firmly condemn hate speech, discrimination, and bigotry in all forms within our community. Recent comments made by Spring Creek High School Principal Wendy Waters have raised deep concerns and are contrary to the principles of inclusivity and respect that we uphold as a community. As we extend our heartfelt condolences to the family of Ji Yan, the victim of the tragic incident at the University of North Carolina, we also recognize the profound impact this incident had on the UNC student body and faculty. We find it extremely distressing that Principal Waters chose this incident to share her unwarranted biases. Principal Waters, as a high school leader, must recognize that our community is composed of diverse backgrounds and experiences that should be celebrated, not divided. Making allegations and assumptions based on nationality or ethnicity perpetuates harmful stereotypes and instills unwarranted fear. Education should be at the forefront of every high school community, promoting enlightenment and understanding. Insinuations that someone who arrived in our country from abroad is automatically associated with negative intentions are not only unjust, but also detrimental to the core values of education that we cherish. As a high school principal, Wendy Waters should strive to create an environment where all students, regardless of their background, feel welcome, supported, and valued. Her statements promote the opposite of that. Therefore, the Goldsboro Wayne NAACP is urging the Wayne County Public School Board of Education to thoroughly evaluate Principal Wendy Waters' fitness to serve and lead our students at Spring Creek High School, as well as any other Wayne County school. Further, we emphasize the pressing need to address diversity and inclusivity on a broader scale throughout our school system. In conclusion, let us remember that our community thrives on the principles of tolerance, acceptance, and unity. Instead of succumbing to fear and division, we must champion and impart positive values and seek inclusivity as a goal for our community today and for our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Antonio Blow from the North Carolina State Conference of NAACP, Education Chair, support for the Wayne County NAACP.
Excuse our delay. You want to just, Tom?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Wayne County Board of Education. My name is Antonio Blow, and I serve as the Educational Chair for the North Carolina State Conference of the NAACP. This afternoon, I am here to certainly support the work and what has just been shared with you by the Goldsboro Wayne branch of the NAACP. Tonight is a reminder of why we come. There's a story that is shared in a book that actually talked about this leader who actually was leaving Judea, and he was headed to Galatly. And then, all of a sudden, there was a voice or a direction that told him that there was a need to go to a place called Samaria. And there was there, he was to go into a town called Saicar. And he met a woman that had a lot of issues, a lot of challenges, a lot of problems. But in the mix of that, they were sitting there having a conversation, and this leader asked this woman to give him a drink of water. Her response was, how do you, a Jew, expect me, a Samaritan, to give you a drink of water? But he goes on because he dealt with that issue, and there are times in the work that we are called to do as board and as leaders of school districts and leaders across our great state and this great county, that we must deal with the issues that come to hand. And when we deal with them right, we'll have the right level of impact. And as we support the Wayne County, Wayne Goldsboro branch of the NAACP, we ask that you deal with the issue that is at hand. And when issues are dealt with right, they always bring forth the right outcome. So tonight, the challenge is that you deal with this issue and deal with it right, and then we will expect the right outcome. Right is always right because in that conversation, that young man, that young leader, was able to impact this woman's life simply because he was willing to deal with the issue, because she was saying, how do you, a Jew, expect me, a Samaritan, and Samaritan has no dealing with Jews? How do you expect me to give you a drink of water? But he dealt with it in that moment. And not only did he impact that person's life, but he impacted the life of the community because he was able to deal with it. So we ask that you would deal with the issue that is at hand.
Next, we have Andrietta Herron, Wayne County Public Schools, Spring Creek High School, letter from staff.
Good afternoon. I'm here representing our staff. I've got parents and students as well that are here. And I'm just going to read you a part of our letter on behalf of our principal.
If you would, please speak into the mic.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Just nervous. We have been very fortunate to be able to work with Mrs. Waters for the past four years and have always known her to conduct herself professionally and responsibly as an administrator at Spring Creek High School. It is due to Ms. Waters' competence, dedication, and guidance that our school climate is relaxed, inviting, and enjoyable. The family-like atmosphere at our school makes work a pleasure and gives each of us a sense of belonging. Our halls are filled with salutations and amicable discourse throughout the day. It's all contributable to the positive culture promoted by our administration. Due to Ms. Waters' attention to detail and pride in our school, we have seen many upgrades, renovations, and additions in our building. She is constantly looking for ways to brighten our halls and facilities and enrich our academics and highlight our school. She has sought out and retained quality educators and volunteers, as well as student-led committees. Mrs. Waters is the epitome of school spirit, which encourages a sense of school identity, pride, and community within our staff and student body. She encompasses our motto, our motto of every child, every chance, every day. It is no accident that our school boasts a near-perfect discipline record. We credit Ms. Waters with setting a tone conducive to learning. She fosters an atmosphere that does not tolerate any behavior that would negatively impact student learning. For example, last year, the cell phone policy, she had implemented a no-phone policy that had helped students recognize and respect her emphasis on learning. She deals with any problems immediately, strategically, and effectively. Her consistent communication with staff, students, and parents is focused on the mission of the school, the success of students, and performance outcomes. She does not allow obstacles to linger in the path. She is fighting for us and making a way for them. Ultimately, performance speaks louder than words. Spring Creek High School, under the direct guidance of Ms. Wendy Waters, according to recently released accountability and testing results for the second year, has exceeded state expectations. We are the only high school that has done that for two years in a row. Results like these do not occur by happenstance, rather through collaborative effort and support. We celebrate this data as a staff, acknowledging and appreciating the encouragement, leadership, and steadfastness that Ms. Waters exemplifies. As a staff, we know that Mrs. Waters always has time for us.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Charles Wright, Wayne County Citizen for Better Schools, speaking on Wayne County Public Schools Policy Code 7335.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Charles Wright. I know most of you, especially those that's been on this board for many years. I come before you tonight requesting our Wayne County Board of Education and superintendent to share the results of your review concerning the posted online comments by Wendy Waters, Principal of Spring Creek High School, Wayne County, North Carolina. I'd like to address specifically Wayne County Public School Policy 7335 that specifically outlines this conduct. It was adopted in April of 2012, and it's been revised several times, seven times, as a matter of fact, and the last revision was in 2021. I first like to address item number C under that policy, where it talks about employee personal use of social media, and that role models for the school system, students, and school employees must be mindful that they are responsible for their public comment even when not acting in the capacity as school system employs. All will comply with these requirements of this policy. In Section D, I'd like to just point out that Paragraphs 5, 11, and 12 directly relate to the behavior in question. Under Item E, Paragraph E deals with consequences. And however, in this policy, the board is mentioned several times, but when it gets to consequences, it specifically says, the superintendent or designee, that doesn't say whether it's the superintendent-designee or school board-designee, but it states, the superintendent or designee may periodically conduct public internet searches to determine if an employee has engaged in conduct that violates this policy. Any employee who has been found by the superintendent to have violated this policy may be subject to disciplinary action up to and including dismissal. Notwithstanding these policies, I would feel that our principals should exhibit outstanding communication skills, organizational skills, problem-solving skills, and vision and leadership qualities, and able to bring together students, staff, members, parents, and community. In so far as disciplinary actions, the question that should be answered first, can Wendy Waters be an effective principal? I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Last, we have Alex Asbun, who is speaking on Interscolastic Athletic Activities for All High School Students.
Good evening, Chairman Latham, board members, and superintendent. My name is Alex Asbun. I'm the Goldsboro High School head soccer coach and also a concerned member of the Wayne County community. I'm presenting a petition to urge the Wayne County Board of Education to allow intercolastic athletic activities for all high school students in Wayne County, including those attending Wayne Early Middle College High School. Unfortunately, due to current restrictions imposed by the board, many high school students are being deprived of these valuable opportunities. It is crucial that we provide equal access to intercolastic athletic across all high schools in our county. By doing so, we can ensure that every student has an equal chance to participate in sports and reap the numerous benefits they offer. Here are some relevant facts supporting this policy change. When it comes to physical and mental health benefits, participation in sports has been proven to improve physical fitness level while promoting mental well-being among teenagers. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics and Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, regular physical regular physical activities through sports reduces obesity rates among adolescents while enhancing their overall mental health. Regarding academic performance, enhancing, engaging in extracurricular activities like sports has shown positive correlations with academic achievement. A study published by the Institute of Education Science found that students involved in athletics tend to have highest grade point averages compared to their not athletic peers. For college admissions, participation, participating in intercollegiate athletics can significantly enhance a student's college application profile. Many colleges value well-rounded individuals who demonstrate commitment, leadership skills, and time management abilities, qualities often developed through participation in team sports. I would also like to point out that other North Carolina early colleges such as Wilkes, Drum, Wayne, Orange, Tri-County, Stokes, Blue Ridge Early College, among many other across our states, allow their students to participate in athletics. I respectfully request that the Wayne County Board of Education reconsider this policies, specifically Policy Code 3620, and takes immediate action to allow intercollegiate athletic activities for all high school students in Wayne County, including Wayne Chats. Let us come together as a community to provide equal opportunities for our youth and empower them through sports. Thank you for your consideration and attention to this matter.
Thank you. That is all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so that will close our public comment section for tonight. Moving on to item 3E, Wayne Community College Board of Trustees. Mr. Schwartz.
Board members, it's, it's come to the board's attention that there was an expired term on the Wayne Community College Board of Trustees that was being filled by Mr. Van Falk. That term expired on June 30 of 2023, and the board did not take any action to fill that vacancy. That's one of the board's appointments, the school board's appointments to the Wayne Community College Board of Trustees. The board has a couple of options here. If you want to tonight, you could vote to appoint any individual to fill that, that seat. That would be a four-year term that would have begun July 1, 2023, expiring June 30, 2027. You could take that action tonight if you'd like. In the past, what the board has done has been to advertise the vacancy and solicit interested individuals and then interview them and then make an appointment. If you wanted to, you could do that. That's not required by law, nor is it required by board policy. It's just a tradition that the board has had. So with that information, it's up to the board tonight to decide what you want to do to try to fill that vacancy. The Community College would like to have that vacancy filled as quickly as possible, obviously, and their next meeting is the last Tuesday of the month, which I believe is the 26th perhaps. So they'd like to try and have that filled as quickly as possible.
I'd like to make a motion that we follow our traditional policy and maybe reduce the timeframe from 30 days a month to two weeks, and then make a selection after interviews.
That would require a special meeting then, yes.
Which would require a special meeting.
That is, that is not a policy per se. That is a tradition, not a policy.
I did say tradition.
No, you said policy.
Well, I meant tradition. That is our tradition.
Traditional practice.
Yeah, traditional practice.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend that motion and have that issue referred to the Policy Committee for the possibility of developing a policy that will relate to this so that we will know from this point on what we need to do.
Mr. Chair, that would be a separate motion that would be not your main to the main motion that could come later on.
So if you'd like to withdraw that and then make a motion, since we have a, a motion and a second, we'll have a discussion, a vote, and then after that, you can make a motion to direct it to policy. Did you withdraw then at this time?
I will withdraw it at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in reference to the appointment, I think that, to be fair and consistent with the actions of the board in the prior six or seven years that we've had appointments to the College Trustee Board, I think we need to be transparent, and I think it needs to be consistent with what we've done in the past because that's what the expectations of whoever may want to apply for the position of a trustee was accustomed to, and I don't think, you know, without notifying the public prior to doing it, I don't, I don't think it's the right thing to change it without, I mean, we just need to be transparent with this. That's my, my opinion on this.
Well, I think the one comment that is slightly different from that would be that it seems to me that Wayne Community College would like Mr. Falk to continue in that position. So I understand where you're coming from, but I just want the board to understand too that it seems to me that they have made their preference known to us. So if the board would like to move forward on that or move forward on a two-week opening of possible candidates.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say that in the past, I have received letters from the board with their recommendations, but we still have always been consistent and fair and opening up to the public for anyone who wanted to serve in that position.
That's the board's decision.
And the board last time, and the board last time did not go with the recommendation of the Community College.
And that's our appointment.
Okay, that's, I'm just bringing to light that, what it happened. So is there any other discussion? No other discussion? Then I would say, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz.
No, right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Henderson.
I'd like to make a motion that we refer this appointments to committees and commissions to the Policy Committee for consideration of a policy that would, that would fit this.
Second.
Wait, can we, can you clarify that? Are you, are you suggesting that a policy be developed to deal with this, or are you suggesting that the appointment that was just decided on be referred to the policy?
No, no, I'm saying that the practices that we're using be put in policy form.
Yes. And Mr. Falk, you seconded that?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
I got a question. In lieu of the time constraints that we're under, and the college wants somebody appointed as quickly as possible, I mean, do we, do we have time to send this back to policy and then come back?
No, I don't think that's what he's asking.
That's what I was asking. That's what I was asking.
This motion has nothing to do with that.
That's for future, yeah.
Future appointments.
Okay, so any other comments?
How long are we opening this up for?
Mr. Chair, the, the motion that's on the floor, the motion that's on the floor, as I understand it, is that the board's practice on appointment of the board of trustee for, for appointments to the board of trustees for Wayne Community College be referred to the Policy Committee for development of a policy for future appointments.
And it's not limited to the Wayne Community College. It's any appointments that we would have to, to a board or commission?
That's a different motion than I think you just made.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
For any appointments?
Yeah, that, that we're required to make at the board.
Are we going to set that separate from the time constraints that we have right now to, to the normal practice that we had of 30 days?
It has nothing to do with that.
He's talking about in the future.
That's what I mean, in the future.
Okay, well, then we don't know because the Policy Committee has not met.
Let me suggest that this, this motion be, be deferred. This is not on the agenda, and, and this is a broader motion than the agenda item.
Can we, on the Policy Committee, then make a directive towards you to develop a policy to be presented at the next Policy Committee?
You can, but I'm not sure what you're asking me to develop, so.
What Mr. Henderson said about the.
The Policy, the Policy Committee can certainly ask for that, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Attorney, if I, if I understand the board correctly, it sounds like they're implying that this be added in terms of the customary practices of the board be indoctrinated as policy within.
For all future.
For all future references.
But not just for the Community College appointment?
Correct. I, I think what happens, if you go out to the Wayne, Wayne County Public Schools website and you go to the board, you will see committees and appointments, and anyone can go in there for any of the committees and appointments, they can, they can fill out a form. And I think what you're asking, Mr. Henderson, as I took it when I seconded the motion, is that not only for the appointment to the Board of Trustees, but to all committees, that we develop a policy. Correct?
That is correct.
Clarified. Any other discussion?
Is that okay? Mr. Schwartz?
It is. It's not on your agenda, but it's.
We're talking about something that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, we're talking about something that's not on the agenda. And should be under board action. Let me see, may I suggest that we, we defer this to either, either to have it come up from the Policy Committee or defer it to the next board meeting? It could, it could certainly come up from the Policy Committee.
Policy is going to meet before the next board.
Oh, yes.
Well, that's all I was asking to do anyway, was to send it to the Policy Committee for them to look at it. Jesus.
I think the best thing to do would just say that we're going to defer this to the Policy Committee to bring forth a policy to the whole board with those ideals in place. Is everybody good with that? Okay. All right. Is that, are you good with that, Mr. Henderson?
If you're going to, you, you can ask for that to be done as chair, or if you want, you can just vote on it. You got a motion and a second. Go ahead.
I'm good with you just saying defer it to the Policy Committee.
Defer it to the Policy Committee and have them establish a policy for appointments. Very good.
So motions, motions withdrawn?
Yeah, the motion is withdrawn. Your second was drawn, Craig.
Yes.
That we do know that this is an expectation at the next policy meeting from the attorney.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, we have policy 3F and 3G for first reading. Does anybody have any issues with combining those, or do we want to hear each one?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, I would really like to request that we remove item G and have it been brought back because we have it listed as 4130, but in the Policy Committee, we had to change it to 4150 because there is already a policy 4130 that talks about discretionary admissions, and we wanted to get in line with the School Boards Association.
Very good. So do I have a motion to remove item G?
We're not taking any action on it. All, all this is just a first read.
Very good.
All right. So therefore, it can go back to policy.
Therefore, it can go back to policy.
No, well, I'm saying it is for first read.
You don't need any action on it.
Yeah, there's no action on it.
Very good.
Yeah, but see, the, the number has changed from 4130 to 4150. And what we're doing, if we could go ahead and allow this to move forward, is we're saying the 4130 would still be pupil reassigned.
The revision to 4130 includes changing it to 4150.
That's right.
So it can come back again.
So when it comes back, it'll be 40, revised to 4150.
Okay.
All right, item F, first read, policy 4023 slash 7233.
It's just up for first reading, so you don't need anything, any action?
I have no questions.
All right, no questions?
You don't need any action on the F4G.
Good.
Yep.
Very good. All right, the 2022 Annual Accountability Report. Mr. Yancey.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, board members, Dr. Witcher, thank you for having me this evening. I'm glad to present to you tonight the school accountability update for 2022-2023. The data were taken out of embargo last week by the DPI and the State Board of Education and accepted by the State Board of Education. So having stated that, we're going to dive into the update presentation where I can review the accountability data with you. The accountability or the presentation is going to be up there in just a minute, but you do have, well, you don't have access to it.
We don't.
There we go. Upper right-hand corner. See slideshow? All right. So the first thing I want to discuss are a few basic tenets about the accountability program. In the accountability program, we generate tests which produce test data, and then we apply those test data into the accountability model. The test data are, simply put, student achievement data. How did kids do on the test? From there, we apply, we, we send them up to DPI to be applied to the accountability program models. These are analysis models designed to, to basically answer research questions. How did subgroups do? How did school systems do? How did a particular school do as it relates to accountability? Next slide, please. The accountability data we will review tonight. All the test results for all required integrated and in-course tests, please understand that we will review these results in the aggregate only, and by aggregate, we're, we're discussing Wayne County Public Schools as a district. If I were to include each individual school's results, we would be here for quite some time tonight. Additionally, we're going to take a look at other academic indicators, including the ACT, ACT Work Keys, English Learn Progress, and cohort graduation rate. We'll take a look at academic growth, school performance grades for schools, and low-performing status for our schools. Additionally, I was given some in-class data to also share, so I did include that in the presentation. The in-class data is used to measure growth in K2, so it does calculate into the total model, so we decided to include that this evening. As far as test results are concerned, when we look at integrated and in-course testing data, essentially, we're just looking at our reading, our math, and our science tests from K through 12. When we talk about tests, we refer to them as either grade level proficient or proficiency or college and career readiness. For this evening's presentation, we are strictly looking at grade level proficiency. Grade level proficiency are how many level threes, fours, and fives did you have on these tests, okay? I, I can tell you when you look at college career readiness, it does become a little redundant because college career readiness, readiness is only level fours and fives. So that number will always be less than grade level proficient. We'll also take a look at the ACT, percentage of 11th graders have a composite score of at least 19. Please bear in mind that in March 2020, the UNC Board of Governors increased the minimum composite score for admission from 17 to 19. That's why we look at 19 now versus 17. Work Keys, that's our percentage of 12th grade CTE completers who achieve a silver certificate or better. I do want to remind you, the definition of completers changed in the 2021-22 school year. It used to be to be declared a completer, you, you completed four levels of a particular pathway, right? Now, to be a completer, you only have to achieve two levels of the pathway, all right? And I don't even think they have to be a particular pathway, but don't hold me to that. That's why we have CTE directors. But with that said, the effect of that is you have more kids that are going to be able to be considered completers, so that's going to increase your sampling pool of people that, that are trying to get a silver certificate or. a silver certificate or better. Okay? And also, our English Learner Progress, that's percentage of English learners meeting the language proficiency standard on the English Language Proficiency Test. Also, we'll take a quick look at cohort graduation rate. As most of you know, cohort graduation rate is near and dear to me because I handled it for the district for a number of years. Basically, at the ninth grade year, a cohort is established for each of the high schools. Okay? And what the state is looking at is of those children that entered in the ninth grade and the others that they picked up along the way that also entered ninth grade in that year, how many of them actually graduated after four years? And that, that is essentially your cohort graduation rate. So basically, it's a function of the number of students in the cohort who graduate within that designated time period versus the overall number of students in the cohort. Could you go ahead to the next slide? I'm sorry, Ken. So with that said, there, there are things that happen that adjust the cohort. Kids exit the cohort. Say a child transfers from one school to another school, they get pulled out of the cohort, and they get placed in another cohort. If a child drops out of school, they, they, they are still part of that cohort, but now they're counting against the cohort, and so on and so forth. If you're ever interested, I'll be glad to talk your ear off about the cohort for at least an hour on end. Moving along, we'll talk about academic growth statuses. This is an indication of the progress that students in the school made over the previous year. So essentially, i- if a year's worth of instruction should equate out to a year's worth of growth for a child. So, so that, that's the basic premise behind growth. There are three designations for growth: exceeded, met, and did not meet. Okay? Or not met. This is measured using the EVOs statistical tool, which we use across the entire state. All right? School performance grades are up next. We'll talk briefly about those. Your school performance grades are based on the achievement of the school, eighty percent, and the growth of the school, twenty percent. They take that number, and then they, they put it down into a scale. Okay? And you have your scale right there, A, eighty-five to a hundred, so on and so forth. Your letter grades are issued for the school overall and for each student subgroup. Most of the time, when we talk about school grades, we're, we're looking at the school overall. But just understand that it is broken down by subgroup also. In order for a subgroup to be counted, at least thirty students must make up the subgroup. If there's less than thirty, then the subgroup is not counted. K two schools receive their letter grades of the school to which they send the largest percentage of students to. In this case, our, our only K two school, if I'm not mistaken, is North Drive. So they will take on the letter grade of the school they send the most kids to, which typically is Carver Heights Elementary. Also, alternative accountability system schools will be assigned a grade for the purpose of identifying comprehensive support improvement and improvement schools, and targeted support and improvement schools per federal statute. Low performance status, low performing school. This is a school performance grade of D or F, and growth status of met or not met. Okay? So the school must have a D or F, and must have a growth status of met or not met. Also, low performing district, this is a district that has greater than fifty percent low performing schools. All right, next up? All right, I threw this slide in here, and, and please understand, this whole presentation will be uploaded in Board Docs after the meeting. I threw this slide in here because there is a research tool that DPI has put together. It's called the Testing Dashboard. Basically, all publicly released data are housed on the Testing Dashboard. So you can spend quite a bit of time just going through data and parsing through it yourself, and, and it really is all publicly released data. I went ahead and created a bit.ly for you to make it a little bit easier because the address for the Testing Dashboard is about this long, so I went ahead and created that bit.ly for you just to make it easier to navigate to. So it's just bit.ly/2023ncdpitestingdashboard. Okay? All right, so the first thing we're going to take a look at are grades three through eight, reading test results, grade level proficiency. So I'll go through these. I'll describe to you this first graph so you'll know what you're looking at. And then we're probably going to quickly go through the, the remaining graphs in this section. So as you can see, up in the upper, to me, upper left-hand corner of the screen is the name of the test we're taking a look at, Reading Grade Three. We're looking at grade level proficiency, which means level three, four, or five in the school, and we're looking at the percentage of students that obtained GLP. Now, you have three lines going across your graph. You have the red line, which is North Carolina. You have the blue line, which is the southeast region. And you have the yellow-orange line, which is Wayne County. This is the same layout we utilized last year. So I wanted to continue that so you can see trend lines as we trend against the southeast region, and we also trend against the state. I did take out pre-two thousand twenty, twenty-one data at this point because we're well into normal accountability now, so there's no need to really go back to COVID, pre-COVID, or what have you. We're, we're just going to take a look from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one moving forward. Okay? So having stated that, I'm not going to belabor the point about looking at all the data points on the screen. I'm just going to tell you that we experienced a one percentage point jump with Reading Grade Three GLP. Moving along, Ken. Reading Grade Four GLP, we experienced a one-point jump. Reading Grade Five GLP, no movement. Reading Grade Six GLP, we got a good bump there of six points. Reading Grade Seven GLP, we had a drop of one. Reading Grade Eight GLP, we had no movement. Moving along, we're going to take a look at grades three through eight math. Math Grade Three GLP, we experienced a three-point bump. Math Grade Four GLP, a drop of one. Math Grade Five GLP, an increase of one. Math Grade Six GLP, an increase of two. Math Grade Seven GLP, a drop of one. And then Math Grade Eight GLP, a huge jump by seven points. And I, I will say that I like the look of that graph because we're right there, we, we jumped right back up into the trend lines of the state and of the southeast region. So that, that was a significant jump there. All right, Grades Five Through Eight, Science Test Results. Science Grade Five GLP, we're looking at a drop of one. Science Grade Eight GLP, we are looking at a drop of two. All right, next up, we have our High School, Grades Nine Through Twelve, English Two, Math One, Math Three, and Biology Test Results. First up is English Two GLP. We have a drop of four points there. Math One. Did it just jump ahead? Okay. Go back. Yep, there we go. Math One, seven-point increase in Math One. Again, a huge jump in that area. Moving along, Math Three, we experienced a four-point jump there. And then Biology, no movement. Grade Eleven ACT Scores, percentage of students scoring nineteen or above, we experienced a decline of point nine. And as you can see with the state, they also experienced a decline. I think everybody is kind of struggling with that jump from seventeen to nineteen as far as that ACT score increase. Moving along, we have ACT Work Key Scores, percentage of student CTE completers scoring silver or above. So as you can see, we experienced a decline of one point three. Now, I do want to point out to you that the, the policy about changing it from four to two, while it was developed prior to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, it, it didn't go into effect until the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That's why you see that sharp decline between twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one into the next year.
Got a question, same question I had last year.
Sure.
We have always been ahead of the state, and that's because the county commissioners have paid for every junior to take ACT Work Keys. Every junior, not just CTE completers, which allowed us to be able to retest anyone that didn't have a silver to bring them up to silver. It was a tactic that has really played well for us. Have we gone back to testing all juniors? Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving along. English Learner Progress, percentage of English learners making progress towards exiting English learner status. This is a composite of exits and annual progress towards exiting. And if you'll take a look there, we did have an increase of one point five for our ELP. Moving along, we're taking a look at High School Cohort Graduation Rate, the four-year rate, and the five-year rate. So when you take a look at our four-year cohort graduation rate, we did experience a point four increase as a district. When you take a look at our five-year cohort graduation rate, we did experience a decline of four point three percentage points. Next up? All right, now we're going to take a quick look at our in-class data. Again, I want to remind the board that in-class data are used to measure K through two teachers as far as growth is concerned. Okay? So what you're seeing there are four sets of bar graphs, kindergarten, first, second, third. The first bar graph is for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The second bar graph is for the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. So year over year, you did experience an increase of four percentage points in kindergarten, one percentage point, or three percentage points in first grade, thirteen percentage points in second grade, and two percentage points in third grade of proficient or well-above proficient students. So what you're seeing in green and blue, those are your proficient and well, well-above proficient student. Now, I do want to emphasize that in-class measures reading readiness and reading proficiency. It does not measure reading comprehension. When they actually take the EOG, that's when we're getting into comprehension. Okay? All right. We're looking at academic growth status now. So first up, I'm listing out the schools for you that exceeded academic growth status. Those were Carver Elementary, Grantham Elementary, Greenwood Middle, Norway Middle, Rosewood Middle, Spring Creek Elementary, and Spring Creek High. Next up, Academic Growth Met. That would be Carver Heights Elementary, Dillard Middle, Eastern Wayne Elementary, Fremont Stars Elementary, Man Olive Middle, Rosewood Elementary, Rosewood High, Spring Creek Middle, Northwest Elementary, Wayne Early Middle College, and Wayne School of Technical Arts. And then finally, Academic Growth Not Met. Brogdon Middle, Brogdon Primary, Charles B. Acoch High, Eastern Wayne High, Eastern Wayne Middle, Goldsboro High, Grantham Middle, Meadow Lane Elementary, Southern Wayne High, Tommy's Road Elementary, Northeast Elementary, Wayne Academy, and Wayne School of Engineering. Moving along, School Performance Grades. So ultimately, these are the grades that the state gives each of the schools. And again, as a reminder, it is based off eighty percent achievement, twenty percent growth. So we did have one school this year that achieved a performance grade of A, that was Wayne Early Middle College. I just want to remind the board, we had no schools last year that achieved an A. Next up, we have schools receiving a performance grade of B, Grantham Elementary, Wayne School of Technical Arts, and Wayne School of Engineering. Schools receiving a performance grade of C, Charles B. Acoch High, Greenwood Middle, Meadow Lane Elementary, Norway Middle, Rosewood High, Rosewood Middle, Spring Creek Elementary, Spring Creek High, and Northwest Elementary. Next up, we have schools receiving a performance grade of D. Carver Elementary, Carver Heights Elementary, Eastern Wayne Elementary, Eastern Wayne High, Fremont Stars Elementary, Man Olive Middle, Rosewood Elementary, Southern Wayne High, Spring Creek Middle, Tommy's Road Elementary, North Drive Elementary, and Northeast Elementary. And then finally, we have schools receiving a performance grade of F. Brogdon Middle, Brogdon Primary, Dillard Middle, Eastern Wayne Middle, Goldsboro High, and Grantham Middle. And finally, we have our low performing status. Again, these are schools that got a D or F, and they got a growth status of met or not met. So in our list, you'll see the schools designated in the list. Any school with an asterisk, that means that they are recurring low performing school. Or they had the recurring low performing school designation. That means that they got the low performing status designation two out of the three past years. I do want to note that Greenwood Middle School exited low performing status this year. So having stated that, your, those are your schools with low performing status designation. Okay? Go ahead. Okay. Okay. So, so that concludes the overview of accountability data from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Again, I didn't go school by school, blow by blow, across the district because it would take up a lot of time. I am more than glad to sit down with any of the board members and go over the Testing Dashboard and show you how you can dig into those data and how you can delve into it. Having stated that, are there any questions?
One came on, three went, uh, one came off, three went on.
Yes.
What percentage are we?
We are over fifty percent.
So the district is not?
Low performing district. Yes, sir.
Dr. Witcher, do you have anything to say?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Yancey.
Thank you.
You gave a very comprehensive report, and certainly, I have spent considerable time reviewing the data, and will spend even more time looking at the data, which is in large part why I've asked our leadership of each of our schools to be here tonight unless there was some sort of an emergent reason why they could not be here. And having been a principal that's turned around a low performing middle school and a low performing high school, the work is not easy. You know, we can argue day and night about whether the state's accountability system is fair, whether it's a level playing field for a high-poverty district. But the fact of the matter is, the state has not altered the accountability model. The model is what it is. The law is what it is. We will not make excuses. All of our students are entitled to equal opportunity and access to a high-quality education. In my visits around the district, we have high-quality educators in our district. We have high-quality leadership in our district. Does the scale move in certain areas? Yes, it does. But it does not diminish the access and responsibility we have to each and every student, regardless of how much money they may have in their pockets or where they come from. In my professional and humble opinion, I think the higher poverty areas, we owe students even more in terms of turning around their opportunities. We will do the work that needs to be done this year. We are all very clear-eyed about it, and I will touch on this more so at our upcoming principals' meeting on Wednesday. The work will be done for the schools that need to turn around. We will do that. Our administrators are up to the task. For those schools, particularly Greenwood, I'm proud of the work that you and your team have done over the last academic year. For those schools that missed the mark, you know, we reviewed the internal ready report over the summer, and I was a little disappointed with a change in one of our schools. Again, we will not make excuses for any differences in reports. I have reviewed the data thoroughly, and the data is what it is. We will get through this. Wayne County is a resilient community. Eastern North Carolina is a resilient part of the state. It's been through a lot, from storms, tragedies, and other situations. In terms of the academic indicators, we are in a position to make great strides. You know, we've talked about, when I first came here, we don't retest students. We're retesting this upcoming year. Some of my measurements and indicators show that that would remove several. Some of my measurements and indicators show that that would remove several of our schools. But that's not good enough. We still owe it to our students to move the needle. As I've said before, it's not acceptable for a school not to meet academic growth in a given year. We owe a child each year to move the needle instructionally for what our children need to have. We're gonna do that for this upcoming year. I think together, we can have an exciting journey this year that can be fun for our students, engaging for our students, and continue to build our team of teachers and instructional leaders to make Wayne County where, again, as I've said many times, the school system of choice for people that live in this county. I still believe public schools are the best bang for the buck for students. Academically, athletically, we're where it's at. But it's time that we take our position. Hold your heads up high, because if your school earned an F, if your school earned a D, if your school earned a C, you have an opportunity to make strides this year. And we owe it for our children. Because I'm not gonna be satisfied until every parent points at our school buildings when they ride by and says, "That's where my child goes to school and I'm proud of it." So again, no excuses. We're not about that. We're about shouldering up to the plow and accepting responsibility and making a difference for our children. And we're gonna do it.
Thank you, Dr. Witcher. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Mr. Hanners?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to say that, Dr. Witcher, I want to thank you first of all for making sure that you had the principals here tonight to hear that. I think it is critical that both of us, uh, the administration at the schools as well as the board are on one accord in trying to make improvements for this school. And I, I can assure you that there are many of us, if not all of us, on this board that will stand with you to do whatever you need to try to bring those numbers, those grades up. Uh, but I, I want you to hold your heads high and say, "We're gonna do better next year." Thank you.
Thank you.
But, uh, and can I say something as well? Uh, one of the things that we've talked about in policy on several occasions, it's been the, uh, information or things that are listed in our policies. And one of our policies is thirty-four twenty, which talks about student promotion and accountability. And in that policy, there is some information that is supposed to be presented to the board. And we went round and around this past, uh, year talking about, "Well, where is this report? When are we gonna get this report?" And I think it was, uh, suggested, and we even put it in policy this year, that that report would also come with this student accountability report. So I would like respectfully request that Mr. Robert Yancey look at policy thirty-four twenty, student promotion and accountability, look at section K, reporting requirements, and present that. And I think we've had a earlier discussion that you were not familiar with the, uh, request for it coming tonight, but you, that you would make it at a, at the next board meeting.
Yeah, we, we had that discussion and just to clarify, Policy Code Thirty-four Twenty deals with the alternative learning programs, correct? Okay, so, so what we're requesting is, uh, accountability data as it relates to the alternative learning program. And I do know there has been discussions back and forth about that. I, I think, um, with, with that said, I'll take the reins of that and go ahead and put that together. Um, it, I, I think, because the report has never been done in, in previous years, um, I, I think it's just been something that nobody has really been sure about. But yes, I'll take the reins of that and, and, uh, go ahead and work with the alternative, uh, learning programs and get those data together for you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, is that the program where we determine what model we are gonna follow?
Nope, nope. Um, so, so that's part of the policy. That's part of the policy.
Okay.
But there's another part of the policy that says that a report will be given to the board on an annual basis and there are components to that.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's what has been discussed.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Anything else on our accountability report? If not, let's move on.
Mr. Chairman, if I could please, uh, our principals have been gracious of their time this evening. Principals often have long days, early days. I wanted them to be here for their data presentation. The rest of the meeting is likely to last for some time. I'd like to ask that our principals be allowed to head back to
Please.
their school or their home.
Thank you for showing up.
Thanks. Thank you.
Supro?
This may be an appropriate time to ask this question. Uh, under the Learner's Program, um, the elementary teachers that are involved have been requested to do, at least, I'm telling you what I, my understanding, uh, have been requested to do a soundboard. Okay, now, do they purchase these soundboards on their own and develop them or does something come under that program?
You're talking about letters?
Yes.
Wordwalls and soundwalls. Um, they do have posters that they can, uh, they can purchase or they can just print them out.
But it would not be an expenditure that the individual teacher would bear.
It's not an expenditure that they would have to personally incur though.
Well, now, this is what I was, this.
Would you all, come on up to the mic, please. Well then, come on down.
I do have about five of those, um, Sound Valley wordwall posters in, uh, in my office. So if you have a teacher, elementary teacher that needs one, just let me know.
The information that I was giving, we have teachers going out. One lady has spent a hundred dollars, another lady eighty-two, and someone ninety-two. That was the comments that were made to me last night. And, uh, they showed me some pictures of them and they were saying that if they printed out what was sent to them, that was more than seventy pages and they're not being given any additional pa- pa- uh, paper, uh, for the year in order to do that. So I was just wondering, first of all, I was wondering, is this something the district had given them to do through this program that would require them to spend their own money? Or how could they get it done so they did not have to do that?
Yes ma'am, it is a requirement that, um, that our superintendent did issue at the principals retreat for them to have wordwalls, soundwalls, or the Sound Valley that they call it through, um, letters. It was also an expectation through letters last year when they took the training for them to post, um, the, the Sound Valleys so that the kids would actually have the actual formations of the mouth, et cetera. But again, as Ms. Tarte said, it's not anything that they actually should have to come out of pocket to do. So if they will reach out to us, if their principals need additional paper, um, getting ready to do the federal programs presentation right now, all elementary schools are Title I.
Well, now, I want you to
So they
I want you to know that I was really supportive of you last night because I had read my board docs. I knew what the money was and I knew the people that were talking to me.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm saying, wait a minute now, you're a Title I school, you've got a lot of money coming in.
There's some money there, yes. So if you will just, yeah, if we can just find out why, absolutely, then we can definitely get them, uh, get them the, the help and the supplies that they need. Yes ma'am.
Alright.
But no, they should not be coming out of pocket to, to do that, that requirement, no ma'am.
Alright, with that.
And I can say today, no principal or teacher has contacted me. I don't know about you, Ms. Lynn.
No, 'cause I still have five posters in my
I don't thi- I, I think the people that I was talking to, I don't think that they realized it or questioned it. And I was saying, you need to talk to your principal.
Absolutely.
And, uh, and, and then they told me that this was a requirement and I said, "Well, I understand that. I've heard that there are some wordwalls, but you didn't have to spend money to do wordwalls."
No ma'am.
But, but now, I'm not at the elementary level, so when they showed me some of the things that they did, uh, and they said it came out of this seventy-page packet and they, they would be reducing the amount of paper that they get to use for the year, that's when I said, "Well, wait a minute, something is wrong here. There, there needs to be a better way." So I was asking because I did not understand.
Alright, well, let's segue into three I, federal programs overview.
Alright, uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Witcher, members of the board. I am standing before you to give an overview of, uh, our federal programs. I do believe you do have access to that PowerPoint, correct?
Yes.
Alright, so we will go right along. Um, slide two is just there as an overview for what Title I is. Slide three, the goals of Title I are to promote equity, increase academic achievement, provide direct instructional support, professional development and promote parent education and engagement. We can move on to slide four. These are our mandated set-asides. So as we begin to get into the actual money part and, uh, the spending, you will see our mandatory, uh, set-asides. We have that one percent mandatory set-aside for parent engagement. And when you look at that mandatory one percent set-aside for parent engagement, it is also mandated that ninety percent of that one percent actually go out to the schools for parent engagement. We also have funds that are to be encumbered for administrative costs, our district initiatives and school improvement interventions. And that last bullet is the one that we always keep in mind, that all federal, um, programs, Title I, um, Title III, One C are to supplement, not supplant, meaning we cannot take money away that the district would initially allot for certain positions and certain initiatives and then supplant that with Title I. It should be in addition to. Slide five talks about our carryover set-asides. You'll see at the top of that slide, um, twenty-two, twenty-three, and our carryover amount there. We carried over two million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-five cent. Just as last year, whenever I gave you the overview, we are tending to carry over more because of ESER, because we actually have that money that, uh, is taking the place of some things that we would do with Title I. We have reached the end of ESER, so, uh, we will not be seeing that much carryover in our Title I budget following the end of, um, of this year. Um, in the next school year, we'll be using more of that. You'll see the amount that was retained at the district and then the amount of carryover that actually went back out to schools. You can see at the bottom of, um, excuse me, at the bottom of that graphic, how that carryover was divided out. Remember that we do still consult with our private schools. Private schools are entitled to equitable share, um, meaning any of their school, any of their students that would qualify for Title I services and would attend a public school, they can generate funds for those students within their school. And then we work together to help support those schools, supporting those students within their schools. Slide six. This is our actual allotment for this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four allotment. You'll see that at the top, seven million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-one. Yes, there you go. The amount that was retained at the district and then the amount that was distributed to the school sites. So the carryover that you saw on the other page would be in addition to our new fiscal year allotment.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
When you spoke, just about three slides ago, when you spoke of carryovers.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you gave some balances or some numbers, did that include ESER monies?
No, sir, mm-mm.
'Cause I, I thought I heard you say, well, it's
I was saying, we carry, we have more, we are carrying over like two million, a little more than two million. But the reason why we're able to carry over so much in federal programs, O-5-0 or Title I, is because we have ESER. So we're using ESER funds to do a lot now that we would be doing out of O-5-0. And because we've got that cushion, we, we see that we are carrying over more on our side.
Because we can't keep ESER funds.
We can't keep ESER funds, nope, mm-mm.
So why, why, why are we not letting the carryover go to the schools? Why are we keeping so much carryover at the district and not distributing to the schools?
The, the district set-aside is, is ultimately for schools.
Yeah, it is ultimately for schools and some of the district initiatives that we have to do. But when you think about carryover, also, Mr. Joyner, some of that was distributed to schools and came back.
Because they were unable to purchase it.
Because they were, yes.
By June thirtieth, so if they already had the money at one point, were going to purchase something, but it had to come back because the purchase order was canceled, it still seems that money should go back to the school.
And it would be nice if we could do that, but because of the way that we read the numbers, we look at the community eligibility provision, it comes back and then we, it, because the schools are a separate line within the district budget. So it really doesn't go to the school, it goes to the district line item with the school next to it. So if the school doesn't spend that line item, it all rolls back into the district and then we have to go through the process of realotment. And then based off of their numbers, their percentages, et cetera, is what they, they get realotted. However, because we do hold back, as Dr. Witcher just mentioned, we do hold back some things on the district side. We are able to, if schools need it, et cetera, to go on and, and help with them to get started and those types of things.
That was gonna be my question, because if you look at the fiscal year twenty-four allotment, we're holding back more than we're putting out right now.
That was because of ESER funds.
Right.
But if the ESER funds end?
Uh, September next year.
Okay.
I can interject two things here. First of all, the carryover largely comes from the district. That two million dollar carryover comes from money we didn't spend at the district. It is miniscule what the schools do not spend. They do not convert two million back to us. And we have about one point four up here that we have saved and have kept in our coffers. And they have about five hundred thousand. We take about five hundred thousand out of our coffers and they send it back out. They don't save that much money. Trust me, they spend down to the penny or ower.
And, and, and I understand that. I just know that sometimes when the purchase orders were canceled because of what would come in in time,
Mm-hmm.
a school may have to purchase something that may not have been as a great of need, that it really would have wished they could have saved that money to purchase for something they needed more in the future. Um, it, and, so that's, that was my question or concern because, so how long can you carry over federal dollars? The schools can't carry over federal dollars without turning them back into use, so how long can the district
We have to, we have to have it encumbered by September thirtieth.
September thirtieth, liquidated by the beginning of December.
We have to get together, make a budget and plan for district initiatives by September thirtieth. And so in that, we make sure first of all that all of the schools are touched. That's how we do our salaries for our, the teachers. That's how we do, um, all any extra program that they want to do. All of that is done, is given back to the schools one way or the other.
One way or the other.
Also, um, this, this school year ends June thirtieth. We use that carryover to start the school year. We still have to pay salaries in July, August, September. This money doesn't drop until October, so therefore we also have to use that carryover to do there. So, um,
So that carryover has to carry us through the end of September each year.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's the federal end of the fiscal year.
Yes.
The federal end is June thirtieth, but we have to make application for these funds. So our application must due August thirty-first.
Well, I mean, our, our end is
Both our fiscal year and the federal fiscal year is over June thirtieth. The school year begins July first, but we don't get that money until October.
So you need money.
Therefore, we have to carry over to run the school system.
Okay, that was just throwing me off, 'cause
Yeah.
prior experience, we had to spend our money by the end of September, because that was the end of the fiscal year.
We have to have it encumbered by the end of
Okay.
And that kinda answered my question, 'cause you made the comment about, the, the schools don't save money, it's the savings at the district, but it still has to be spent. It's not like you can build you a big pot.
I can be a good steward of it during the year to make sure we have enough to start this school year, which is what I do and what Ms. Lynn does and Ms. Hoffman.
Right.
But, um, I can't port it.
Gotcha.
So, you know, like we do a fund balance. So I try to make sure, then I go to the budgets and when I do red, um, staff, that we save enough so I know we can pay salaries. I take salaries off the dock.
Absolutely.
So that we can cover the people that are twelve-month employees and any expenditures that we have to So that we can cover the people that are twelve-month employees and any expenditures that we have to add to start the school.
Very good. Continue, please.
Slide seven. These are just the tiers for, uh, each one of the schools. We have our schools that are greater than eighty percent poverty, and you can see their school allotments there. We worked with a minimum per pupil allotment of four hundred and twelve dollars and eleven cent. That's when we put it, um, put the funds into the calculation. It gives us a per pupil amount. And then based off of the poverty bands, we decide what, um, what the actual allotment per school, um, will be. You could move down to eight. You'll see the bands for the poverty percentages for those bands of students, or excuse me, of schools, and what their allotment came out to. And slides nine and ten illustrate the same thing. Are there any questions on poverty percentages and tiers for schools?
I have one question about Fremont Star, uh, Fremont. Since we, um, this is for this year, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And we would be opening a new school next year?
Yes.
Slide eleven is there just for you to be able to look at some comparisons between fiscal years and fiscal year allotments, um, as well as low income percentage, um, changes. And then fiscal year twenty-four with our specific, um, plans. There, you'll see the district initiatives, the school improvement initiatives, some of those things that Dr. Artist was just talking about, uh, a little while ago. Slide thirteen goes into our other federal funds. Typically, when we say federal programs, people automatically go to Title One A, um, simply because that is the fund that involves the schools and school allotments. Um, Title Three, but federal programs also includes our Title Three, Four, One oh Four, which are our EL and immigrant students. Our Title Four, PRC One oh Eight, which is for safe and supportive schools. We also have Title One C, which is migrant education. And then we will have CSI, comprehensive support and improvement schools. Right now, we have three of those. That is Goldsboro High School, Wayne, um, Wayne Academy for low graduation rates, and then Brogdon Middle School. So they will receive that allotment again on this year. I have the estimate there that's based off of what they received in fiscal year twenty-three. That allotment is based off of their ADM. Neither of those, uh, any, excuse me, neither of those schools have changed their ADM significantly, so we could expect that their drop would be pretty much the same. Slide fourteen, it just talks about the expected programming for our other federal programs grants. You will see the intention, um, for those, for those district initiatives there. And that is it. You have any further questions?
Anybody?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, the BT support program.
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Dr. Dr. Witcher and members of the board. We are the BT support team, and, um, we are here to present to you the Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan for the year.
Good evening. This year, we have two hundred and one total BTs and sixty-six site-based mentors. We also support EPI teachers. We currently have seventy-four international teachers working for Wayne County Public Schools.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bianca Lewis, one of the Beginning Teacher Coordinators. Um, in talking about Standard One systematic support for high-quality instruction programs, we have Cassie Barnes, who is our licensure specialist. Could you move? Who's our licensure specialist, and she works very closely with all of our alternative licensed teachers to make sure that they are meeting those, um, requirements, whether it's testing or coursework. And our Beginning Teacher Support Program is divided into three years. We have BT ones, BT twos, and BT threes. Uh, support is not only offered through the Beginning Teacher Coordinators, but also every school has at least one or more mentors. Every year during the month of July, we have our New Teacher Orientation, which is a three-day, um, event. The very first day, HR goes over, uh, guidelines and expectations. On the second day, we have curriculum and instruction. And on the third day, we have the Wayne County Chamber to provide a breakfast for the beginning teachers and also a scavenger hunt, which takes place downtown. Um, our Beginning Teacher Workroom is, I would say, stellar compared to some of the other counties. Uh, many counties do not have a Beginning Teacher Workroom. But our Beginning Teachers utilize that on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And this is a workroom where they can come in, they can create posters, they can make copies. They can also utilize the Professional Resource, um, Library to check out information. And of course, our, uh, mentors are provided with a fifteen-hundred-dollar stipend. Um, yearly, our mentors have to go through an application process, and the principal has the discretion of, um, doing that. Also, they have to complete an evaluation at the end of the year. And I would say that we try to keep our, um, ratio to four Beginning Teachers per one BT. And as you can see on the screen, we have our mentor, um, requirements. Those are some of the things that the mentors are required to do with our Beginning Teachers in addition to facilitating or presenting at their school level, um, at the district level, or for professional development. And also, we require our, um, mentors to choose a committee to work on, whether it's New Teacher Orientation, whether it's working in our, uh, BT Workroom, or we can also utilize them at, um, staff or professional developments. And then our PD focus for mentors, we ask them to support the BTs by implementing, um, District PD, which an example of that would be one of our Learning Labs. And also, we have our mentors to choose a cohort to attend with the Beginning Teachers so that they can assist with implementation of teacher strategies throughout the year.
Uh, good evening. My name is Anita Martin. I'm one of the Beginning Teacher Coordinators. Um, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening, and I would like to talk to you about Standards Three and Standards Four. So Standard Three is mentoring for instructional excellence. Uh, as Ms. Lewis said, every school has at least one mentor. Uh, most of the schools have more than one, depending on the number of Beginning Teachers that are housed there. Um, for support, the Beginning Teachers have a shared folder. Within that folder are documents, um, that they can use to access agendas, make editable, make edits on these agendas for their monthly meeting. Um, we provide for them suggested, uh, district ideas for them to present each month to their BTs. And also, um, because that agenda is editable, they can put their school-based items on there. Um, as you can see here, these are some things that we ask the mentors to talk about with their Beginning Teachers, like PDP development, their self-assessments, classroom management, and so forth. Um, there's differentiated support and individual meetings so that those mentors are able to meet with the BTs before school, after school, during planning, um, whenever they can get together to offer that, um, support to them. Next. Okay. Standard Four, Beginning Teacher Professional Development. We're very fortunate to have Dr. Duchess May again with Edu Consulting Firm to present, uh, professional development to our Beginning Teachers this year. As you can see, she has tailored the instruction, uh, for each cohort. So Beginning Teachers, um, the first year have lesson planning, BT twos, instructional strategies, BT threes, data dig. She also offers professional development for those alternative licensure teachers. And new this year, uh, she has, um, will have professional development for our international teachers, our EPI teachers. So we're excited about that. That eighty hours of AL orientation, that is from the state, uh, Beginning Teacher Support Policies that they have. They say that Beginning Teachers have to have, if they're alternative licensure, forty hours of pre-service and then forty hours of professional development throughout the rest of the school year. Um, so they get that professional development at New Teacher Orientation in July, as Ms. Lewis said. Um, and because we are stressing the importance of this professional development that's laid out in the state's Beginning Teacher Support Plan, um, we are saying that the BTs this year, they can only miss one of their district PD sessions. It's vital that they attend all sessions so that they can learn and grow and get strategies. Um, so it's vital that they attend. And then the ALs only miss two for those same reasons. They need, they need the strategies, um, and the learning that goes on in those professional developments.
So they do miss one, is there any option to have a makeup date?
Not this year.
Okay.
Not this year.
Excuse me, one other thing, is it still true that a new hire mid-year, they have to get their forty hours of orientation in before they can still go into the classroom?
When you're calling it, when you say a new hire, anyone that's hired in January or after, they would get those forty hours the following school year. Because they would have already missed so many of the PDs, it'd be almost impossible for them to make that up.
I know you're talking about eighty hours, the additional forty hours. Because the way, the way I'm hearing, you say they do forty hours at the New Teacher Orientation.
Mm-mm. Forty hours would be when, if they're hired after New Teacher Orientation, forty hours of pre-service before they ever step in that classroom. Because you've got brand-new people coming from a different walk of life. Never taught before, so they have five days, forty hours, pre-service, and then the other forty would be within the school year.
I'm sorry, I should have used the forty hours of pre-service. That's what I was talking about. Thank you.
Sure. Um, and so failure to attend the district meetings will result in a repeat of that BT year because they did not get the professional development that was, um, offered. Okay, and then we wanted to highlight, again, uh, next slide. This is Ms. Beth Rose. She's our twenty-twenty-three NCAT. She, um, was able to achieve the Southeast Region, um, Beginning Teacher of the Year, so we're very proud of her. She's alternative licensure teacher, doing a great job. Um, but as far as professional development, uh, there's NCAT finalists from across the state um, are able to go to NCAT and receive that weeks-long professional development, and then they get some other really good perks while they're there too. Um, we have already gotten in the works with the portfolios from, um, this year's BT twos, NCAT portfolios, and, uh, hopefully a winner will be announced soon.
February fifteenth. February fifteenth, uh, the final, final will be February fifteenth.
District winner will be announced soon.
There you go.
I have a question, Ms. Martin.
Sure.
Who decides the NCAT, um, winner?
We have, uh, people that are looking at the portfolios across the districts.
Okay, I didn't know.
So only one person goes?
One person is chosen, mm-hmm, yes. From the district. That's our Wayne County NCAT winner, selected from the BT twos.
What, the one? Yeah, that's not, that's too little.
It would be a great opportunity for many people, but right now it's just one. All right.
There will be twenty-seven, uh, finalists from across the state. There will be three from each of the eight education regions and three from charter schools. And they'll have a week of professional development at NCAT and then.
NCAT where?
Uh, Colley.
Okay.
And then, uh, up in the mountains. And, uh, on February fifteenth, there will be a big culminating dinner and event, and it's like the Academy Awards. Um, it's a real big deal, and, um, if you're new, if you'd like to come, let me know.
But now, do you have other programs that our teachers could request to attend?
Oh.
Lots and lots of them.
Yes, yes, yeah. You can just go to the NCAT website and there, there's a constant menu.
Thank you.
And Standard Five is the last standard, um, that is used to evaluate the Beginning Teacher Support Program. And you find the information also in the BT Support Program Handbook that's for your approval tonight. Um, and in that slide, as you can see, the monitoring every five years, that is something that is done across the state with all the Beginning Teacher Support Program in, in all of the districts. Um, as you can see also, that the plan is done each year as we're doing at, at this time for your review. The peer review process, that's a process that is used throughout the state with Beginning Teacher Support Programs where the districts come in and they review what the standards look like, um, in each program. The, the districts give feedback to one another, and they give, uh, tips and suggestions um, on how to improve, and that's just a great way to expand your program and get ideas from, from other districts. And we do that yearly. Um, the BT yearly documents, um, the BT coordinators just spoke about those. Those are very important when it comes to the, the monitoring plan. Those are the things that, when we are monitored, that the state looks for to make sure that we have accurately documented the information, that our BTs have gotten the training that they are, that's required by the state, and that they are properly licensed as well. Uh, NISA's Comprehensive Timeline, that is an area that, um, we are fo- focused, laser-focused on this year as well as other years. And with that, um, the BT teachers also have, the Beginning Teachers have to receive forty-five minutes of an observation. The principal is key in that process, and that is something we have talked to principals about. And they're, they're doing a great job of making sure that's done. The PDs, PDPs are also required, and they're making sure that that's being done this year as well. Uh, we're looking at informing our Beginning Teachers that they need to be, um, proactive in being a part of their, the meetings. And if they are doing any non-instructional duties such as sports or other activities, that they have that permission because their first job is the, is to get their training at the Beginning Teacher level. So finally, in two thousand twenty-five, we will be, we will have another review, we will be monitored again. And at that time, the state will determine what our ratings are in all of these five standards. And in these standards, in the past, we've made accomplishment distinguished, so we're very proud of that accomplishment, and we look forward to doing the same this year.
Thank you very much. Any comments?
Could I ask a question, please? You mentioned it, I was gonna bring it up because it's actually item number E on our next, on the next part of our agenda, the handbook. Um, I noticed in reading the handbook that it says that the first and second observation uh, is by the principal and or designate. Has that changed? It used to be that it had to be done by the principals because the principals are ultimately the one who have, are in charge of the initial hire and the ones with the initial dismissal if there's something goes on. I was thought it interesting to note that the wording said "or the designate." So is the principal required to do the first two formal observations, or is that something that's changed?
So the principal is required to do the first observation. Overall, the principal has to do the complete evaluation of the Beginning Teacher. So that second bullet, um, as you just mentioned, the second observation can be by the assistant principal.
Right, okay, well, I just, the way I read it, maybe I read it wrong. It was that the first and the second could be done by the designate. So I'll make sure that the first one, still being done by the principal.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you to what our team does for our Beginning Teachers. Um, I've seen many different approaches throughout the state in terms of what's done to support teachers. And, uh, Wayne County does an exceptional job of looking out for our Beginning Teachers. Our program over at School Street, every time I've gone by and seen the operations that the ladies have going on over there, it's just second to none. And, um, just very excited about what we have for our Beginning Teachers in, in the district. So hats off to you, and thank you for your work that you do for our Beginning Teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Section four, four A, purchase orders and contracts. Ms. Rouse.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I am bringing forth one purchase order contract for board approval. This is with Truist. This is our performance loan contract to be paid from local funds, PRC eight oh eight. And the amount of this is for seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-one cent. This is the third annual payment of the eight years that were entered, well, that before Dr. Lewis retired, he had got the lower percentage rate. So, we still have, counting this year, six more payments. Any questions?
Any questions? And this is, we reduced this interest rate significantly with, this was our second refinance. Is that right?
I believe so.
And we're term of that.
Is this our third payment?
This is our third payment.
Okay. So, what, if, there were eight payments, right?
Under this new agreement that Dr. Lewis had entered into, yes. I believe there were payments prior to that, before that period, that had a higher interest rate.
Yes.
But this is the remaining since it was refinanced under the low interest rate. There were eight payments.
Oh, okay. So, therefore, we have how many more payments?
Counting this year, six.
Okay. Because this is the second year.
This is the third.
We were able to save a significant amount of money with the lower interest rate.
Yes.
Yes. Done in 2028.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions? Need a motion to-
I move that we make a payment to Trist Performance Loan Contract for seven hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-one cent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Tommy has a second. Any other discussion? Be nice when we finally get this off our backs. Thank you. All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have group term life insurance.
Yeah. So, tonight, I'm bringing forth something for the board to consider. This was presented in the Finance Committee for August. And based on their decision, we're moving forward to the board for action this evening. This is the opportunity to provide our employees term life insurance. We talked to the Pierce Group representatives. We believe it's a good rate. You're looking at a ten thousand dollar policy. It's employees that work a minimum of twenty hours or more per week on a regular basis, as well as it's portable for them at the same group rate. If they were able to, if they are able to leave, they can purchase it on their own, as well as it's a guaranteed issue, no health questions asked. Currently, the pre, the total annual premium, which will be from January first, 2024 through December thirty-first, 2024, is fifty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Now, there will be a cost savings because this group term life insurance also provides employee assistance program. It is included in this term. So, I know currently we use the REACH program for their services. So, we can absorb that cost and put it in with this cost. So, you're looking close to a thirty-four thousand dollar difference that we would have to pay to offer our employees a term life insurance policy.
So, the total here, fifty-two, eight? Is that right?
Um, yes, I'm sorry, fifty-two, eight hundred, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion when approved. Four B.
Second. Motion to second. Any other discussion?
I do have some discussion. I got questions. I, I thought that we had discussed after the School Board Association meeting that we would at least solicit to other insurance companies for our umbrella policy, just to see what was out there. I do realize that they have since done away with the administrative fee, but now it sounds like we're getting ready to pay more than the administrative fee. So, we're just taking the money that we were saving and putting it right back into a benefit for our employees, which is great. But, it still just seems like somebody just doesn't want to go out to, to just see what is out there. I'm not saying that there's anything better, but we found out when we were at the School Board Association meeting through a vendor that they did not charge any administrative fees. And the Pierce Group, all of a sudden, stops charging us an administrative fee. But now, we got another option where we're going to give them more money.
This was only an option, was it not, Mrs. Rouse? That they gave us to provide an additional, I mean, there's some of our employees that don't have life insurance period. I think it's a great thing for us to offer our employees life insurance. I mean, it's a minimal amount of money. I think Pierce Group comes highly recommended, not just by, Dr. Witcher, have you dealt with Pierce Group in the past?
I've dealt with them in every district that I've been in.
How do you find them to be, I mean?
I've always found them to be very above board and do an outstanding job in terms of service to employees and districts. I've had no issue with them whatsoever.
And we've never had any issues with Pierce Group, have we?
No, sir. Since my arrival three years ago, we have not had any issues with Pierce Group.
I mean, you would know because you deal with them.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Correct? Have a motion to approve this?
Motion's on the floor.
Okay, it's already on the floor. In a second. Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Oh, I'm not opposed.
Were you in favor, Ms. Burden?
Yes.
Six one.
Six one. All right, moving on to donations.
Okay. Since our last meeting, we have thirty-four donations that we're bringing before board approval. The monetary value of the, of these donations equate to two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, and the non-monetary at three thousand, fifteen dollars, which brings us our year-to-date monetary value at twenty thousand, two hundred dollars, and our non-monetary value at seven thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars.
I would like to say thank you to all our donators again. And it looks like the principal's retreat was well taken care of by our local community. So, appreciate that. Need a motion to approve the donations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Next up, an MOU with University of North Carolina Chapel Hill.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Witcher, I bring to you tonight an affiliation agreement between UNC Chapel Hill and Wayne County Public Schools with the School of Education. This allows us for an extensive opportunity to complete internships as well as student teachers and fellowships as well with UNC Chapel Hill. We do have an internship currently covered under this MOU at this time. And we look forward to our ongoing partnership with UNC Chapel Hill to continue to support internships in Wayne County Public Schools. This has been reviewed by our, our attorneys. With this agreement, this will continue for our partnership. For your recommendation for approval or questions.
Basically, nothing has changed except the dates.
Except the dates. That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Chairman, I'll make a motion when approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. The VT Teacher Support Program Handbook.
Yes, sir. We have provided for you tonight the Beginning Teacher Support Group along, led by Ms. Brown. And the team has provided to you the overview tonight. This is our handbook that we submit annually to the state for approval to guide our work with the Beginning Teacher Support Program. They gave you the overview with the five standards of the work and the direction for the 2023-2024 school year. It is our recommendation to you for your review and approval.
This is simply what we were talking about earlier?
Yes, sir.
But in handbook form?
In a handbook form. We have to submit this to the state with a signature from the board chair.
Do you also include your PowerPoint that they did?
Yes, ma'am.
In this hand, I know it's here in writing.
Yes, ma'am.
But do you also include the PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am. They will review that PowerPoint as well as board minutes that this was approved tonight. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I would like to point out that reading this handbook, the statement I was talking about in question says the principal and/or his designate will conduct the first and second required observation in the first semester. So, I know what Ms. Brown said to us, but I, I hope it is the principal doing that first observation at least.
It is. And we share that in the NESA's orientation with all of our principals as well, and that the principals are to do that first observation. Yes, sir. You're welcome.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? There were any other comments? Raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Harrow, your turn.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Dr. Witcher, and members of the board. I have a few items to come before you tonight from Support Services. The first item is Board Action, Item F, Support Service PO Approval. There are five POs coming to you for your requested approval tonight. Item one is the Capital Chevrolet for a 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 2500. This comes out of the funds set aside by the board for vehicle purchases and capital outlay, fifty-three thousand, nine eighty and twenty-seven cent. We, this is a new vehicle. We would take, deliver this vehicle around October or November. I will share with the board that, that sales representative, Jeremy, that General Motors may have a worker's strike this year, and that could affect delivery of this vehicle potentially. But it is here requested for your approval.
I have a question. What is, what is the average lifespan of one of our new vehicles?
So, I can tell you, Mr. Chair, from the vehicles that we have, as you will see, we have a 2004 up for surplus tonight that has two hundred and five thousand miles on it. So, we're, we're running some vehicles that are close to twenty years of age.
That's not many miles.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that question. Item number two, SBC Mechanical Corporation is for Rosewood High School boiler replacement. This would be paid out of PRC 181. This is an ESTRA project, and this funds are budgeted for that in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. Item number three is Kenley Ford for a 2023 Ford F-150. This vehicle is on the lot in Kenley at this time, and they gave us three thousand dollars off the sticker price, paid for out of our capital outlay funds, PRC zero seven seven, thirty-nine thousand, nine fifty-six, fifty-two for the amount of that vehicle. Item four-
So, it says it's a 2023, but it's essentially a new vehicle.
It's a new vehicle with forty-two or forty-three thousand miles on it.
Okay.
Forty-two or forty-three miles on it. I apologize.
Okay.
Item four is Educational Logistics, or EDULOG, as we refer to it in transportation circles. This is for the Smart Bus Pilot Program out of state, PRC zero seven seven, in the amount of one, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. As stated in the past, this is used for our service for our GPS connectivity and tracking. And this is with the grant that was given to us from the state to use. Item five is for CarMax for 2019 Dodge Truck for Operations. This vehicle has about fifty-two thousand miles on it. It would come out of PRC zero seven seven in the amount of twenty-six thousand, forty-four dollars and eighty-six cent. This vehicle purchase would then exhaust our hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside for vehicles. And Operations is using some additional funds from their equipment line item to fund this vehicle. It will replace the one that you are hopefully going to give us permission to surplus on one of the items further down the list. So, these come to you requesting your approval tonight.
Any comments?
Let me help me with the math. We budgeted a hundred and fifty, is that right?
We did, yes, sir.
So, why is maintenance having to come with additional funds? Or we, maybe I'm not knowing the math right.
No, all, all of this is coming out of the hundred, one fifty capital. I remember we just purchased a van for forty-four, forty-five thousand.
Okay, so that's in the, okay.
Yes, sir. It is. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Do I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, members of the board. Item G comes to you as Goldsboro High School HVAC Contract Approval. This has had some legal review. We're asking that you approve it pending additional legal review that may be needed. Your main documents in there are the AI one oh one draft and the AI A two oh one draft. Those are the draft contracts between our owner, which of course is us, that's Wayne County Public Schools, and Daniels and Daniels is the contractor, as well as Pinnacle as the architect. So, this is coming to you for potential questions you may have seeking your approval pending legal review.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Does this have anything to do with the HVAC system in that classroom where they had three and then one was down?
Yes, ma'am.
The whole school.
It's going to be the whole school, right? This affects the whole school, yes, ma'am.
You've got to do with a lot of things, huh?
Yes, ma'am. This affects Building A, the nineteen twenty-six building, the thirty, thirty-six, thirty-four.
And was this in the plan to do for Goldsboro High School?
Yes, ma'am. This is in the plan.
Earlier? But we are just doing it now?
We're doing the contract approval now because the board approved the actual awarding of it a meeting or two ago.
Okay.
In the amount of a little over eight million dollars.
Okay.
I trust that's all ESTRA funds.
Yes, sir.
I trust that's all the windows in the building at almost two million dollars.
It's going to be everything in the nineteen twenty-six and thirty-six buildings.
So, so will you go over what all is going to be replaced? We know HVAC's inside here. Are, is this going to also include the windows? I know we talked about some mechanical, electrical.
Yeah. So, if you look, if you have an opportunity to review your Exhibit B and C, it has in it the plans and the scope of work for that project, which will be included in the contract. But the basic, basic what is happening in Goldsboro High School is all of the HVAC mechanicals will be upgraded or replaced in your nineteen twenty-six building, which is effectively known as A Building, which also has the nineteen thirty-six addition on the wings. Will address air-conditioned package units on the gym, C Building, pretty much the entire campus, the fieldhouse. Will also address the windows in the nineteen twenty-six and thirty-six, thirty-five building. Because if you remember the, when the city originally air-conditioned that building, the units are installed in the windows and are motel-type units. So, once those come out, we'll have to replace the windows. Those windows will be replaced back with something that looks period to the building. So, there might be some additional expense there. Also, we'll be able to work on the lighting in the hallway and the ceiling. Because as I've shared in the past, you may remember the hallways, those drop boxes that are suspended in the main hallway, those were installed in Goldsboro High School when the power was run for those window units. Because when those were installed by the city school system years ago, there was not enough power in the building to operate the window units. So, those have huge contactors in them. So, once we're able to upgrade the chillers, boilers, we'll be able to take all the electrical out and redo the ceiling. ESTRA allows us to replace what we have to remove to get to those things that are allowable under those guidance.
What about the CTE building and ROTC?
ROTC, I think we are addressing some of that as well, Ms. Burden. I can get you-
What about the CTE building?
Yes, ma'am. CTE, the shops.
This, this entire project will be truly transformative for Goldsboro High School.
And when are we, when are we planning to start this?
So, our goal is, of course, when this, because these are your contract documents that will begin execution as soon, as soon as we're finished with everything. That's the legal review. You're looking at September now, so we can get started by the first of the year. Because we are under a push when it comes to the ESTRA deadline. We also have some concerns because, you know, we have another ESTRA project fixing to come up with Southern Wayne High School. We have our pre-bid meeting for that September twentieth on-site at Southern Wayne High School for the potential contractors to review and walk the building. We'll open bids for that on September twenty-eighth. That is an extensive, extensive project as well, where we're looking at removing entire walls in that building. So, we're really concerned about the date of the timeline for these ESTRA funds and have been reaching out to our representatives to see if the state of North Carolina is going to request an extension on this ESTRA fund utilization.
But if you're going to be doing the HVAC in January, what is that going to be for the heating of the building?
Well, we will not separate the heating, Ms. Burden, or anything while the building's in operation. So, your new plumbing, your new piping will be run inside the building. Everything currently is underneath the building. So, all of your, your plumbing and all those things for your mechanicals will be done while the old system is still operating. And it will be dead-end basically at your boilers and where the chiller plant will be. So, as soon as we get out of cooling season or heating season, we can hook up and go. Yes, ma'am. Now, we know there's going to have to be some logistics that have to be worked out because work is going to have to be done while students are in that building safely as we may have to relocate and move some people around to get this done.
With the ESTRA funds, now, it has to be encumbered before the end of September next year? Is that correct?
That is currently the law.
Okay. So, if we have the contract in place and the work is started, then- Okay. So, if we have the contract in place and the work is started, then if it goes past the end of September?
By September, and it has to be expenditure by-
Right. Okay.
Could you tell me those dates for Southern Wayne again?
Yes, sir.
The pre-planning meeting?
Yes, sir. So, the pre-bid meeting is September twentieth-
Okay.
At three-thirty PM in the media center.
Okay.
And that's where our contractors are invited to come to ask questions, listen to the scope of work, and then ask if they would like to walk the building and look at currently what's there. And then the bid packages will be open on September twenty-eighth. We have to have three. If we do not have three, we'll put it back out for some additional days, and then we'll go with however many vendors we have that submit. If it's one, if it's two, we'll open up on the second. But we have to have three the first time we open.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, we are hoping for an extension. We have heard that they may be overstating the opportunity to apply to extend the deadline for those ESTRA funds because of the supply chain-
Exactly.
And the struggles with getting vendors to be able to do the scope of work that Dr. Harrow was talking about. So, we are hoping that-
We would hope so, yes.
General Assembly will do the same.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to approve the Goldsboro High School HVAC renovations contract.
So, move. It should be pending legal.
Under, pending, uh, legal review.
Second.
Who made the, Tommy? All right. I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, members of the board. The next item coming to you is Item H Fremont Pump Station Addendum. So, you have this in Board Docs as well. I'll point you specifically to the agreement or the amendment, which is down at the bottom of the first page, over to the top of the second page. So, as you are aware, the county of Wayne is paying for the lift station, pump station out of ARPA funds. This agreement was not within the original funding agreement. So, this agreement here makes an addendum or change to that agreement to bring in-line the pump station. So, you will see those specific items there saying that, of course, the county of Wayne is paying for this out of their ARPA funds, that we will obviously have this property signed over to them for their tax purposes. Then, of course, when we will operate this, they will pay for it. If there's any overruns, there's no expense to you as a board. And also, once any of the debt service is paid off on the school in the future, the pump station comes back to the school board, just like the school does. So, this makes this a part of the original agreement. This has had legal review by our attorney as well as the county attorney, so this comes to you for approval tonight. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve.
I would like to point out one thing. On the page where Chairman of Wayne County Public Schools signs it, my name is misspelled. There's an E before the first A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're have it corrected.
I made the motion approved.
With the correction.
Correctance, yes. With your correction.
Yep, definitely correct that.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other questions?
Who made the motion? And who made the second?
Tommy.
Second was okay. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. The last item coming to you tonight is Item I Surplus of Vehicle. This is an operations truck vehicle that will be replaced by the one you, of course, approved earlier. This is vehicle oh-four. It's a 2005 Chevrolet Truck 1500. It currently has two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand miles on it. It has a bad engine and some body damage, and we would like to respect the request that this vehicle be surplus.
I make a motion approved. It's just now getting broken into that's.
It's gonna be good. We, we can say we have gotten our service out of it.
It's held Seymour. They can use it for a target on the bombing.
Second.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
All right. We have one second read. Policy thirty-one oh-one. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make before we approve it?
Need a motion?
I'm waiting. No comments? I need a motion to approve.
All right, move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right. Dr. Artis, your turn.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Witcher, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to bring the CNI purchase orders and contracts for this month. They are grouped into sections, and I will go through a section and then allow you to have any questions or comments. The first are one through six. Number one is to Music and Art Center. That is for band equipment for Charles B. Acock. That's coming out of Local PRC eight-one-six. The second is Savas Learning. This is for remedial supplies, K-12. This is coming out of Federal PRC one-eight-one. The next is KLK Consulting Incorporated. This is Contracted Services PD for our ELA teachers, coming out of PRC one-eight-one. The next is Renaissance Learning, which is our Accelerated Reader Program, Federal Programs PRC oh-five-oh, as well as Federal Program PRC one-zero-five. Curriculum and Associates, that's number five. That's elevation math software, PRC one-eight-nine. And number six is Ninety-five Percent Phonics Group, which are workbooks for our students under PRC one-eight-one. I'll give you a minute there to ask any questions about the first six.
I'd like to just make a comment. I'm doing a lot of soul searching since our retreat, and we read a plaque when we were at NCAP. And this plaque was a quote and a statement from a prior North Carolina State Teacher of the Year. Thought it was rather important where she said, "We don't need any more educational methodology or the latest curriculum fads. We'd like to study the real stuff." My point, I think, on that is, as a low-performance district now, I think it behooves us that the basics are very, very important, and we gotta make sure that we're doing that for our students. And I think that's what she was getting at, too. So, that's the statement I'd like to make.
Thank you.
Well, I know I spoke to Ms. Tark earlier today about this because I tried to, about the KLK Consulting company. I was trying to go online and get a little information, some background information from them, and couldn't really find any information. So, thank you, Dr. Artis, for giving me a little bit of information, and I talked to, to, to Ms. Tark. You know, I think we all on the board have been a little concerned about four-thousand-five-hundred-dollar consultants coming in seven times a year to, to make, hopefully to make some growth and stuff. So, I hope the teachers will take advantage of this, and they will implement this 'cause, as you've told me before, Dr. Artis, without fidelity and without the teachers doing implementation, then there's just so much we can do. So, I hope that the teachers, especially the, the, the English Language Arts teachers, will, will work in to accept this and do this, the unpacking documents that Ms. Tark and I talked about. So, I just encourage the teachers to please take advantage of this. Thank you.
And I thank you for that endorsement. We need that from the board and, of course, from the leadership team and Dr. Witcher, to not only for our teachers, who often will give us pushback when we try to give them resources and professional development that maybe is different from what they've taught in the past ten years. And we have made these professional developments mandatory, but it, it's incumbent upon the principal. The principal is the direct supervisor of the teachers. So, if we hold the sessions and pay for the consultants to come, and we are there, but they don't have ownership at the schools, then that's the gap. So, Dr. Witcher and I have talked extensively about making sure that we capture who is not only attending these sessions, but who's implementing them with fidelity.
And, and I want to reiterate that because early on, my tenure on the board, I asked you a question about these early dismissal days about the principals that were dismissing people not to attend the early dismissal trainings and stuff. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. The next group?
And I don't want you to misconstrue what my point was. I think if it's a very valid program, then we need to look at it and, and probably implement it. But I just wanna make sure that we're just not doing things for the sake of doing things and hoping that something will work out. We wanna be very, very precise on our programs that we get for our teachers.
Absolutely. And I wanna restate, the things that we have brought to the board for approval have not been programs. They've been textbooks, resources to carry out the North Carolina Standards Course of Study. The first five are all resources, instructional resources at this point. Ninety-five percent phonics is a part of the letters implementation. All right. Next, we have Section seven through twelve. Number seven is Teacher-Created Materials. That's for our Family Engagement Guides. That's PRC fifty. Number eight is for Wayne County School Bus Garage. That's for our Transportation, for our OCS and VR students. That's PRC sixty. The next is Vernetta Smith Different Approach Counseling. That's for Mental Health Counseling Services at Meadow Lane Elementary School and Tommy Road Elementary School. That's PRC fifty. The next is Community Technical Assistance. That's our Global Scholars Program, which is our tutorial program for our middle schools. That's PRC one-eight-one. The next is Venture Rehabilitation Group for our Math Masters Program. The state gave us a new grant this year, PRC one-eight-nine. That is for math-only, and we are targeting our fifth-grade students 'cause that was the group that flatlined. And then we have, that's it, twelve is removed because we have to redo that one, and I didn't wanna mess up the numbering, so that's just says removed.
And nine, ten, and eleven are pending legal review.
Global Scholars, that's not all middle schools?
No, it is not. We were, it was offered to all middle schools, and we had, I believe, five that opted in.
I would like to ask a question about that. I was going through the contract, and maybe I missed it because I, I see that this is for close to half a million dollars for five schools. Four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the Global Scholars, but I saw no indication of the number of hours or the frequency that they would be attending the schools in the, in the document.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jorner. They go every day but Friday.
Every day but Friday. Okay, well, I didn't see it in the thing.
Yes, and we have not decided this year if we're going to do a during-the-day model or an after-school model. We have done both, and we have found that after-school models do not work well with middle school students because they have sports and other things, and they're a little older. Whereas with elementary students, their parents almost welcome that extra hour after school. So, we have not finalized whether it will be push-in or pull-out.
Okay, which, I'm glad you mentioned that 'cause it takes me to number eleven, the Math Masters Program. Our Ventures Rehab. It states that it is Tuesdays and Thursdays for one and a half hours after school.
Yes, I was talking about Global.
Ye- yes, ma'am. I understand. So, I was wondering, is that transportation issue gonna be the same problem?
We don't have a transportation issue. We have an engagement issue. But we are targeting fifth grade, I believe, with this, so the students are a little younger, and we will provide bus transportation.
Okay. Because I realize from what I'm reading in the contract for Math Masters Program, this person is actually using the facility on, at each school, I mean, the faculty.
Yes.
They're hiring the faculty. They're hiring the teachers.
Absolutely.
So, this is to pay their salaries?
That's the salaries and transportation.
The person that they were gonna bring in there to be the coordinator.
Yes, and that's probably the assistant principal.
Okay. So, going back to the conversation we had with the high schools about their doing their afternoon, their after-school tutoring, is it gonna be a similar model that, that, that principals could be using from Title IV money that we had talked about earlier?
Absolutely, or a summer model.
Or the summer model.
Yes, sir.
All right. But transportation will be provided for the Math Masters Program?
Yes, and stipulation of the one-eight-nine grant is that it could not be during the day. When I was speaking about what model we would use, that was for global, um, Community Technical Assistance for the Global Scholars. That one can be in-day or after-school. Math Masters has to be after-school.
And that's gonna be for all-
Or before school.
For all middle schools to have a fifth grade?
We are using the data to target those schools, but we are, I think we are targeting fifth grade right now.
Okay.
And perhaps six.
The contract said between no less than three-hundred-and-fifty, but no more than four-hundred students. So, I was wondering how that would be distributed.
Yes. We're gonna be looking at the beginning-of-year STAR math data and also the end-of-year EOG data to determine the schools that will have the push-in or after-school, and that's for both programs.
And let's go back to the Global Scholars Program. How are we gonna measure success on that?
Uh, we're using the STAR.
The STAR for measure success?
Yes.
Okay.
'Cause we don't wanna wait to the end of grade tests and then say, "Oh, it didn't work." So, these children will be progress monitored.
Have we used the Global Scholars Program before?
Yes, they were with our-
And what were the results last time?
The schools that used it did have significant increase in social, emotional. And by that, I mean the reduction of discipline and that kind of things. We targeted the schools that way first. One of the places that we did have it was at Greenwood, I believe, and they did exit. Mount Olive Middle held, so they met growth. None of the schools that used it did not not meet growth.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking into it, and it was like four, four counties, four, four school districts in the state of North Carolina using it.
Yes.
And they had only, and the last thing I saw, had four-hundred-and-fifty kids total. How many of those were our kids?
I would estimate about seventy-five.
Seventy-five kids, sir.
We started it at Dillard, but we did not have the participation that we wanted there, but we ran it through the whole, the whole cycle. Then, when we returned in, we put it at a couple of more middle schools, and I'm sorry, I don't have those in front of me, but I believe it was Mount Olive Middle, Greenwood Middle, and maybe Grantham Middle. I'm not sure about Grantham. But Dillard Middle opted out, and then we put those three in.
And my last question on this group goes back to item number nine, the mental health from Vernetta Smith from Different Approach Counseling. She's gonna be at two schools?
Yes. She, she doesn't want to do more than that many hours per week.
Well, this question's kinda gonna be directed toward Ms. Emerson because I think at the last meeting, we were talking about the mental health at each school, how many schools were having mental health professionals or people help there? And we talked about, I thought at some point that we were gonna get a list, trying to make sure that every school were having, is having some sort of mental health support.
Yes, sir. That's correct. And I've met with Mr. Durkson.
Okay.
In fact, we were meeting for the, for Pride and N.C. That's what we were talking about, Mr. Jorner.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I know you were moving with that.
Yes.
When you were at Grand and Olive. Yes, so Mr. Durkson and I have met and collaborated on the schools that we recently met. Mr. Durkson, Miss Lott, and myself, and Ms. Rippon from the N.C. Department met to, we met with Pride and N.C.'s representative, Mr. Preswick. And I think we got that list of the current schools through nine, all schools.
Well, and, and that's just one of the things because there's, there's another mental health one that's gonna be coming up, item number twenty, twenty-one on the list, and it's got a few schools mentioned also, but we, you know, we need mental health assistance in every school.
Yes, yes, sir. I agree with you.
Okay. Okay. Well, I would like to have an, an update of which schools have, have some sort of mental health support programs. Thank you very much.
So, I'll just give you a little caveat with that, Mr. Jorner. The schools that are having mental health counseling coming through federal funds that are not EC, that are coming through fifty or one-eight-one, those principals came to me or Ms. Winn individually and cited specific problems and high-needs occurrences. And from there, we worked with them within their Title I plan and the district plan to do that. This is, our efforts have to be above and beyond what the district decides to do. So, these things have to be a part of their plan that's over and above. So, the, the schools that you see here, that's what that is. Federal funds cannot provide mental health counseling across the board unless we put it in our Title I plan. And that, right now, is a function of Student Services, and so that's why it's not included in our plan.
Well, I have no problem with adding additional mental health services to a school. It's just one of those things. As I spoke on the, on the previous meeting, I want to see that we've got something in every school.
Absolutely, and I agree. And one of the things Mr. Durkson is doing is trying to pilot and get us a system-wide SEL program. A big problem that our teachers are, and, and students and, and principals are finding is we don't have a- don't have a systemic SEL program, so therefore, they're having to grasp and find things to do on their own. So, in response to that, that's what the federal programs and CNI is doing, but I am working in conjunction with Mr. Dirkson to vet those programs and hopefully get some pilots going this year and full implementation next year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions about the second group?
And again, nine, ten, eleven are pending legal review.
All right, the next group is fifteen through twenty. Number thirteen is Ed Direction. This is for Brogdon Primary School. This is out of federal PRC zero five oh. Number fourteen is John Sexton and Associates Incorporated. This is for audiology, audiology services. This is for PRC zero six oh. The next is one, is, and I hope I don't mispronounce his name, Ms. Allison Moreles. She will be a occupational therapy assistant contracted services out of PRC zero six oh. Kimberly Baker, occupational therapy assistant contract, federal programs, PRC zero six oh. Anna Dean, occupational therapy services contract, PRC zero six oh. Hannah Diffenbaum, occupational therapy services contract, federal programs, PRC zero six oh. Henry Carroll Grady III, occupational therapy services contract, PRC zero six oh, and Kayla Cannon, occupational therapy assistant contract, PRC zero six oh. These all fall under the auspices of exceptional children, except number thirteen.
And thirteen through twenty have all had legal review.
Yes.
Um, I'm asking more questions, I know.
And I'm glad to answer, Mr. Joyner.
As I read, as I read the contract, it appeared to me these were virtual sessions?
For which one?
I'm, I'm sorry, for Ed Direction.
Ed Direction will be the same model that we're using at Brogdon Middle and Goldsboro High School. They meet virtually with the principal once per week, and then they come to the school at least twice per month. Uh, for example, Mr. Derek Dalton is working with Brogdon Middle and Goldsboro High. He was here last week, came and debriefed with Dr. Witcher and myself, and then went to Goldsboro High and spent the day. So, it is coaching with the principal, and then the second day that they come, they are actually in classrooms coaching the teachers.
Okay. Um, how many contracts do we have with Ed Direction currently?
We currently have Goldsboro High, Brogdon Middle, and now Brogdon Primary, three.
Okay, and we, as we talked about earlier, you know, we talked about that from March, there's really no way to measure any success or data at this point, so.
But we can measure that they worked three years at Dillard Middle, who the second year that they were there, uh, was in the top fifty percent of growth in the state, and this year they repeated that. They're in eighty percent growth index, so it worked at Dillard.
I agree, and I'd just say we're going to try to, I would hope this board would hold Ed Direction to the same fire next year to see that we get these results with full-time, full-time support, so.
And so, again, that, we have to compliment Mr. Ray, who embraced and implemented, and the teachers did what the coaches said to do. Part, we can bring the resources and the training there, but the fidelity of implementation is at the school level. Uh, my department will do everything we can to support them and help that implementation be what it needs to be, but we all have to buy into it.
And that goes back to, like you said, hoping the teachers buy in, hope the principals do also.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you. The last group, twenty-one through twenty-five. Twenty-one is Simplicity Counseling, Counseling and Mental Health Services. That's PRC one eighty-one. Uh, twenty-two, the Interpreter Network Incorporated, that's for sign language interpreting contract, PRC zero six zero. Twenty-three, Envision Services, and twenty-four, Envision Services. The first is for orientation and mobility services. The second is for deaf and hard-of-hearing services. They both are from PRC zero six oh, and the last is for Ms. Danny Jones, or that may be a man, I'm sorry, Danny Jones, Occupational Therapy Assistant Contract, PRC zero six oh.
And all of these, twenty-one through twenty-five have had legal review?
Yes.
I'd like to ask about the counseling part there for the seven schools for Simplicity Counseling, number twenty-one. Um, and then we have one that's going to be going for Target, I believe, I believe, at School Street.
Absolutely.
Um, I'd like to direct this toward the attorney.
Uh-oh.
Okay, um.
Which contract you want?
This, this is counseling services that we are offering or we're trying to put into the school. With the new, the Parent Bill of Rights that we got an update on is, are we going to be able to provide counseling to these kids if the parents do not agree to it?
Uh, we, they don't, they don't participate if the parents do not agree.
And, and, and that is a concern that I had from when I was a principal, when you had parents that unfortunately, you know, just refused to even entertain the idea sometimes, and that's what I was wondering because, uh.
We, Simplicity Counseling cannot provide any service unless the parent provides in writing an agreement to, for them to participate, and we do not bill for these services, so some of them are one-on-one. Some schools run it as a electives. For example, at Brogdon Primary, um, the students who have a high number of referrals for discipline, they are run through us, uh, like, like an art or music in a, in their regular master schedule, where they go in and they get, um, group lessons or small-group lessons on getting along and, and those social skills that will help them to be at school and then hopefully do better with growth and achievement. Others have, um, where the actual therapist goes into the classroom, because at some of our high-needs schools, there are multiple children in that classroom, either with some type of behavior impediment or either a diagnosis, so they may push into that classroom. So, there's, there's several models, and we also hope to maybe have some of our parents be able to do some small-group, um, roundtables. That's a place that we are expanding it to this year. But the very first step is looking at it through discipline data or teacher referral, and then either, um, the principal, the assistant principal, or the school social worker, or the guidance counselor procures a written agreement. We have a form that Simplicity uses that gives permission, and then after that, um, the services are given.
So, if they, if they push into the whole classroom, do we still have to have parent permission?
No.
Okay.
Since you're talking about mental health counseling services, there is a difference between what you're seeing through the Simplicity Program being done through federal programs, which is more of a small-group model, compared to maybe what you're thinking along the lines of Pride, NC, or Magellan, which works directly one-on-one with students, and in all situations, whether it's happening through those programs or even the Wish Centers, there is a required consent for the parent to even be, to agree to even be put into contact with those programs. So, we are going through all of those consents, and of course, continuing to wait for further direction from the state if there's anything beyond what we need to be doing in regards to getting that parent consent.
Well, you know, I applaud the fact that we're offering these services as much as we can, but just, I, once again, I hope the parents will be willing to take, take part in allowing.
And we just wrote, Mr. Joyner, I just wrote a grant for, um, additional SEL services such as this for our high-needs middle schools, so I hope that we will get those and that will be able to supplement what we're doing, because this is largely driven by O-five-oh and one eighty-one. We know that one eighty-one is going to expire. We're going to have a lot of things that we're going to have to purchase with fifty, which is Title I, so hopefully, we will be awarded that grant, we're, um, we will get a base amount based on our ADM, and then what we have applied for over that. So, we applied for the grant for five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question. I was looking at most of these contracts, and most of them have Wayne County addresses. Are these former employees that went out and, okay, I've noticed some of the names were employees for Wayne County.
Yes, typically, they are from the, the district, they've retired, they've branched out into private practice or consulting or that type of thing.
And doubled their hourly rate.
Yes.
Is that the case with the Global Scholars Program?
No, Global Scholars is out of Raleigh. He is originally from here. Um, his name is Mr. Roland Whitley. Uh, he grew up in Mount Olive. He's from the Mount Olive area, uh, but his tech, his headquarters is out of Raleigh, I believe.
Any other questions? Well, let's see, we got, we did twenty-one through twenty-five?
We're all through with CNI. I now ask for your input.
Twenty-six through thirty.
Yeah, sure do. Sorry. Twenty-six is for Venture Rehab Group, that's Speech and Language Services, PR sixty. Twenty-seven, again, Venture Rehab Group, Occupational Therapy Services, PRC zero sixty. Uh, Venture Rehab Group, Physical Therapy Services, PRC zero sixty. Number twenty-nine, Vivian Costa, Speech and Language Services, PRC sixty, and the last is Leslie Anderson Hatch, Psychology Services, PRC sixty. Sorry, Ms. Emerson, they were up under everything else.
And these have all had legal review too, twenty-six through thirty.
I have no questions on this group.
All right. Any other questions on any of these bills? If not, I'd need a motion pending legal review of nine, ten, and eleven to approve these.
So moved, this data.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, no further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, second read on thirty-two, ten. Do we have any questions from anybody, or probably the policy committee members on thirty-two, ten?
Now, I would just remind the board that this was one that was missed. It was, uh, it was supposed to come back to the board when Dr. Lewis was actually still here, and really what this did was this streamlined the review process so that it didn't take months to get, um, these materials reviewed. It would, in essence, um, have the school-level media techni, technology advisory committee to be reviewing the materials before they were purchased, and then if there was an objection, it would go directly to the superintendent, and a district-level different group of people would review if there was any objections. Um, the way that it was, or had been in the past, was that, um, they would order, and then if there was an objection, the school level would review it, and then if they had an objection to the school level, then they would have to appeal that to the district level, and then the district would look at it. So, this just simply streamlined that process.
And will this change again if?
I'll just ask him.
The parental right bill goes through?
Well, the, the Parents' Bill of Rights has gone through. The question is the implementation date.
Okay.
May change on that. Um, and, uh, on this one, I don't think we're going to need to make any changes on this one. Based on that, yeah.
All right. Any other comments, questions on thirty-two, ten? Not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
That was Mr. Joyner, and on the motion?
Hey, Mr. Folk, hold a second.
And Mr. Folk, thank you.
Okay, and it's unanimous. Okay, we're back to wages, and back to Dr. Hart.
I do, I do, I'm getting my steps tonight, but they don't count because I don't have on my Fitbit. Um, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Witcher, I bring before you tonight a memorandum of understanding with wages. We have entered into one already, but that is for our regular education pre-k students. This is an agreement so that we can, uh, interact with our exceptional children's, uh, students. This is the same agreement as last year, only the date of implementation has changed.
Legal review?
Uh, this did not have legal review this year.
So, pending?
There's no change, we didn't change anything, but.
You should have reviewed it.
I think you should have reviewed it now.
Uh, no, you know, you know what? We did take a look at this. We didn't, we didn't, you know, do a file or anything on this, but we did take a look at this. It's fine.
Okay.
It is fine.
Yes, it is. We had looked at it.
I make a motion, we approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Mr. Sanders beat you.
It's okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
That was a motion by Mr. Sanders, second by Mr. Joyner.
I made the motion, Mr. Sanders, second.
Oh, sorry about that.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Yancy, round two.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, board members, and Dr. Witcher, I present to you tonight three purchase orders on behalf of the technology side of the House, basically. Um, the first one we have is with Instructure Incorporated. That is for our annual Canvas subscription. Uh, Canvas is utilized as a learning management system at the middle school and high school level. Um, it is being paid for out of federal PRC one eighty-one, and it is in the amount of forty-seven thousand, five hundred, twenty dollars. Uh, the second purchase order is with Sergeant Labs. Uh, this is specifically for the Aristotle K-12 licensing subscription, uh, that we started last year with them. Um, this is being paid out of Local Capital Outlay, PRC fifteen, in the amount of seventy thousand dollars, or seventy thousand, six hundred, eighty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. As a reminder, Aristotle K-12, while it has cyberbullying and filtering and various other functions, the most popular functions with our teachers is the monitoring of student use of Chromebooks from their computer, uh, so they can be pretty much anywhere in the room and monitor their students. Um, and then the third purchase order that we have is with CDWG. Um, this is for purchasing, uh, it's actually the final big purchase that we're making on our data center. Uh, this replaces out the core switch array in the data center, um, and we are using Local Capital Outlay, PRC fifteen, to finance that purchase. Um, just for your own knowledge, the core switch is, uh, what basically all traffic goes through in the data center. Um, our current core switches, I want to say, are somewhere in the ballpark, about eight-ish years old. Um, you really need to start replacing them at about that time. Um, we, we have pushed switches a little bit harder, uh, but with the core switches in the data center, uh, we really don't want to take chances on that because, uh, the core switch, uh, all traffic goes through it. Uh, so if your core switch in the data center goes down, we don't have internet for a long time. Um, and for that particular purchase, uh, we did collect multiple quotes, and all of the quotes were off of competitive contracts. Um, so we, we went with the low, low quote, basically, off of a competitive contract. Are there any questions?
Any questions? None? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
A motion to second? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yancy. Okay. Student and family support.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Dr. Witcher, board members. Appreciate the opportunity to present this item to you this evening. This was actually presented to our finance committee, and essentially, what we're working to do is bring the district number of AEDs in all of our schools up to a minimum standard. What we found as we've reviews, eight, reviewed the AEDs and how many each school had, is that there were different types, there were, um, different funding streams. Oftentimes, some of your schools may have had PTAs, make donations of AED units, um, there are different age groups, and what we found is that with our non-ZOUL units, which ZOUL, ZOUL AEDs are a, a brand of AED that you can replace with universal batteries, universal pads, and they're very, while a, a little more expensive in the long run, you, you get more lifetime out of them, whereas some of your cheaper units, you may not be able to replace the batteries in, which means you've got, got an AED unit, but it expires. What we did was we looked at how many schools had AEDs, we looked at the size of their campuses, we looked at how many schools had athletic programs, and we came to a minimum standard, and so we looked at, um, making sure every middle school had at least two, one for their athletics programs, one for, um, location of their buildings, and what that does is it helps prevent, if you have something happening during the school day, that you're not having to run down to the gym to get the unit, or locate the, the unit in a coach's office. You can have a, a unit located in both places. At the high school level, make sure there's three, if they have an athletic program. For your larger high schools, having a minimum of at least four. Um, and of course, make sure every single elementary school has at least one, and for your larger schools, maybe potentially two, so, and you'll see the chart that I provided. And essentially, in addition to the, um, the AED units, we also felt signage was important. We looked at how many units currently are in place that don't have signage, or don't have a cabinet that they can be secured in, and so we just wanted to make sure that we are at a minimum standard, but in order to do. But in order to do this, we needed to bring it to you based on the price and the cost of those purchases. So in the quote, since I don't have the chart pulled up, is seventy-three thousand dollars for all of these items, which include a total of thirty-three ZOUL AED units, fifty-two cabinets, thirty-three ZOUL pediatric pads, and fifty-seven signs. And the plan is to remove the non-ZOUL units from the, from the schools to ensure they all have the same brand of AED, which is helpful for training, but also that we know we have the highest quality AED in our buildings. And then removing those and bringing those to our supplementary areas where we don't have them, such as our transportation operations, even here in Central Services.
All right, any questions?
Mr. Chair, make a motion, we approve any purchase?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to second. All in favor, raise your right hand. This will be good for the safety in our schools.
Thank you.
And it's standardized, which is what I like.
Absolutely. The, the next two items were items I'd planned to bring to you, which were updates regarding the volunteer policy, fifty-fifteen, as well as the AR. Those items are currently under review with attorneys, so we'll bring them through policy and plan to bring them to you at the next meeting. So we're gonna ask that you make a motion to defer those items until the next meeting. At least the policy, the AR doesn't require board action, but we would like to bring those items back to you.
We need to motion that or not, Richard?
Yes, this is on the agenda. Just a motion to defer to the next board meeting.
I make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next up, consent agenda.
The consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and/or items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings upon, open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants a separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request. Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve the consent agenda.
With item F as amended.
Had already been done.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, any second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Done. Gets us down to board member comments. I'll start with Mr. Henderson.
No comment.
Mr. Joyner?
The Eagles must be on Monday night football.
I do want to, first off, thank Mr. Yancy for the district-wide level data. But I would like to know when we, as a board, can expect to see the individual school data, unless you're really gonna make us all go to you and you show us how to use that.
I'm more than glad to sit down with the board.
I can consolidate all the data down for you if you need me to.
Well, I, I really feel like you've already done it.
Yeah, yeah, well, when you're talking about individualized schools, I mean, we can go through and create a presentation going through all thirty-three schools. Or I'm a firm proponent of showing people how to access freely available data. Because once you go into the testing dashboard and you start accessing those data, it empowers the user in order to search for what they want to search for. For instance, I was asked last year to take a look at accountability data specifically on students with military connection, okay? Utilizing the standard spreadsheets that we get from DPI, that can be a little cumbersome. But going into the testing dashboard, I was able to pull it up within about thirty minutes. So, so having stated that, you know, it is the board's whim or wish, how they would like to see individualized school data, blow-by-blow, across the board. If you would like, I can easily schedule a session for the board to show them the testing dashboard. How many, I mean, I'm not gonna ask you this. But I, I do ask people a lot when they ask for testing data. Did you go to the testing dashboard? I do know that the Bitly that I created last year, which was Bitly NCDPI testing dashboard, was utilized by four people in one year. Okay? So, so, so having stated that, you know, I really do encourage people to utilize the resources that are right in front of them. And, and leverage those resources to do whatever research you, you would like to do. But again, it, it's, whatever is the wish of the board.
That's okay, Mr. Yancy, I, I can do it and I can share it with the board. That's fine, okay. I mean, I'll go to WRL and get my data if I need to.
All right. Mr. West?
I'd just like to say, I know this has been a long meeting, everybody's ready to get out of here, but I'll say this, thank you to the staff at Central Services for the hard work, getting our school year started all right. Again, thank you to all our building administrators, our teachers, and all of our support staff in Wayne County Public Schools. And especially to Dr. Witcher, because I, I truly thank every day that I interact with Dr. Witcher, that we certainly made the right choice in Wayne County Public Schools. And I appreciate the job you're doing, so that's my.
Ms. Burton? All right, Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, just briefly, I don't really like being a low-performing district, but I feel very confident in Dr. Witcher and the staff. He's a symbol. And going forward, I, I think the future of Wayne County Public Schools is very good. I'm excited about the money that's being spent at Goldsboro High School, Southern Wayne, and all across the district. So we just need to work harder. And I'm, as a board member, I'm willing to do whatever. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Foke? No comment? I'll, I'll piggyback on to Mr. Sanders. The board has been very pleased with the, the amount of work that has gone in to get this school year off to a right start. And I know we've hit a little bump in the road here, but that's just it. It's a little bump in the road, and we're gonna get past it, and we're gonna climb the hill. And I think there's nothing but good days ahead for Wayne County Public Schools. And like Mr. West said, I think, I think we made the right choice with Dr. Witcher. So thanks to the staff, thanks to all our supervisors, and that's all I got to say. Mr. Schwartz, you got anything?
Just a suggestion that you establish a date as soon as possible for the interviews for the Wayne County College trustees. Might be better to do that while you're here so that everything can work back from that date.
Well, we talked about two weeks. Do we want to end it on a Friday or a Monday?
My recommendation would be, just if I may, is that we open it up tomorrow for immediate advertisement. And are we running it two weeks as in fourteen days? Attorney Schwartz, is that your recommendation?
That would, that would end the application period on the twenty-sixth, if you do that. And could you interview on Thursday, the twenty-eighth? Well, the twenty-sixth is the date of the next W C C board meeting, so that's not gonna get you done in time for that meeting. So if you ended it on the twenty-second, you'd have to have a board meeting on Monday, the twenty-fifth.
For the interviews?
For the interviews.
But just so I'm clear, the board did say that they were gonna advertise it for two weeks, so we wouldn't want to shorten that, correct? Because the board's already taken action on that.
Well.
Just on the application, are you doing interviews? Are you doing review of applications?
Review of applications.
That's suddenly the previous process.
No, we did interviews.
We did an interview.
We did interviews.
Yeah, we actually had them coming.
So.
But we said two weeks, but to make the time work out for the college, if we can get an appointment by the twenty-sixth, we could make it a specific number of days and end it on a Friday and do the interviews on a Monday and make the recommendation to the Community College Board. Have it there.
Well, they meet in the evening, so you could also, you could meet during the day of the twenty-sixth if we had to.
So we could just go to a specific number of days through the twenty-second, and then that would give us a meeting on the twenty-fifth on Monday. And for our interviews, if that works for everybody.
Yes, because the twenty-sixth is a bad day for me. I have an appointment in the afternoon.
The twenty-fifth is?
The twenty-sixth.
Okay, so the twenty-fifth, we could do it.
The twenty-fifth, I can do it, yeah.
If that works, if that works for the board, we could make that happen as far as the advertisement period, have the candidates here, and then the board make a decision after that period of time, and then the candidate would be prepared to roll. Attorney Schwartz, does that meet your?
So if we open it up tomorrow, you're saying end it on the twenty-second, the Friday prior?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily.
We would have the applications in, and then we can scan them, I mean, review them and pick who we want to interview. We don't have to interview everyone, huh?
We won't have to extend that process with our questions and stuff like that. You know, normally, we, we sit down and just say, I want some questions and stuff.
Yeah. Well, don't we have material from the past? That could be a starting point.
Yes, we do.
And we could be reviewing that before we even get the application.
So is the recommendation then to open it up tomorrow morning on the twelfth? And, and finish the application process on the twenty-second?
That's that Friday.
And then have interviews? I mean, we could get together, you know, at like ten o'clock on Monday, the twenty-fifth, review applications, and then have interviews that afternoon.
Well, we'd have to notify the people that are gonna be interviewed so they know to be here.
Right, well, that's true.
That won't work.
Well, we could put a caveat that at the bottom, it said candidates will be selected at this time. Candidates will need to be prepared to come in for an interview on this day.
And let them know when the interviews are gonna be.
That's correct.
If you're selected.
That's correct.
Ken, we, we could make that happen, correct?
All right.
The board good with that?
Is everybody good with that?
Does that work?
Open it up tomorrow, finish the application process on the twenty-second, and have the interviews on the afternoon of the twenty-fifth?
Yes. Depending on how many we have.
Now, does the entire board want to participate? Because if the board does, we'd have to notice that as a meeting of the board or just a select number.
Well, the whole board.
The whole board does that.
The whole board?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
My only concern is making sure that we get some kind of questions for board members to ask instead of having to go ad lib.
How we did it in the past, I think, Mr. Henderson, we, um.
Say what? I didn't hear what you said.
I was addressing you at your question. I said how we did it in the past was, I think that the board members individually maybe came up with some questions. Is that not how we did it?
I can't recall.
Would you like, would you like for staff maybe to develop a standardized set of questions?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Dorkson, I, I think you could probably look back. Mr. Schwartz may even have some of the questions. I don't know if you do or not.
I don't believe I do.
But, you know, if nothing else, we could bring the questions with us or, or present the questions to the chairman by the twenty-second.
And then submit them to us, and then we'll put them together. That way it's standardized, fair for everybody. Does that work?
All right, so you're, you're now gonna open applications tomorrow, keep them open from the twelfth to the twenty-second, and tell people to be prepared for interviews in the board. And the board selection on, at a meeting on the twenty-fifth, at what time?
One P M.
Well, it's gonna depend on how, if we have twenty-five people, we'll be on everybody.
By Monday morning, we can also whittle that down just by looking at it ourselves.
At one P M?
So we can, for example, we can meet at ten. Okay, and then at one, we start interviews. And we would notify people, hey, you know, like Dr. Witcher said, be prepared. And if your name is called on that, that morning, then be ready to go.
Well, they just need to set, if they want to serve, they need to set aside Monday afternoon to be interviewed, so.
All right.
You got everything?
Does that work for everybody?
Just again, to be clear, applications will open tomorrow, September twelve. They'll remain open through five P M on September twenty-second, which is a Friday. And everyone will be told that when they apply, they should be prepared to come to a board meeting at one P M on Monday, September twenty-five, for interviews and selection.
Yes.
Okay.
Can we ask that those, their applications be into us by the fifteenth? I mean, by twelve noon on that Friday, so that maybe we could get them and we can scan them at home, you know, go through them?
You could do whatever you want. You want to set noon on the twenty-second?
Well, that's Ms. Burton's wish. Is that what everybody wants to do?
Well.
That's fine.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it.
When we come in here at ten o'clock, we will have an idea of.
Well, that's on Monday.
I know it, but that's.
Then we'll have an idea, yes.
All right, so you got a consensus on that? Applications will open tomorrow, September twelve. Application deadline will be noon on Friday, September twenty-second. Everyone will be advised in the application that they need to be prepared to come to a board meeting at one o'clock on September, Monday, September twenty-fifth, for interviews.
Is there a specific application they have to fill out?
There will be by tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a Google form last time, I think.
All right. Okay, is that all, Richard?
That's, that's all I got.
Dr. Witcher?
Just echoing my points again tonight that I made earlier during the accountability presentation, I think everyone in the building is very clear-eyed about the work that's ahead, and rest assured, the work will be done. And we look forward to having a better year to announce next year.
Very good. So moved, Mr. Chair.
Stack motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We're adjourned.